Steve Jones, I'll call this meeting to order at 7:01. This is the February 8th, 2022 meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Republicans.
One nation under God.
Invisible.
Thank you. Everyone can be seated. Proclamations and presentations, we have none at this time, so we will move to public petitions, communications, and fellow participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen, or if you're on a mobile device, you can hit star nine. All right, Heather McCann.
Hi, yes, Heather McCann, 62 Cross and Drive. In preparation for the BOE's final budget being presented to the town council, I just wanted to remind everyone about the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Under federal Part B of this act, our district must provide a free and appropriate public education. The act mandates that any school that receives funds from the U.S. Department of Education must comply, whether it be providing it in district or paying for the outplacement. But to the greatest extent, when we can keep these programs in district, we have been able to realize a cost savings. More importantly, though, it is that these children need to be with their peers. These students are general education students first. It has been proven time and again that everyone benefits by having students of all abilities learning alongside each other. Those gen ed students who do not require services receive the same curriculum they would have received regardless of whether a student who receives services is learning within the same classroom. Disabilities under this act can include but are not limited to the following: learning disabilities such as dyslexia, dyscalculia, and dysgraphia; conditions that affect child's alertness, energy or strength such as ADHD or ADD; developmental disabilities such as autism spectrum disorder; emotional disturbances which include anxiety disorders, schizophrenia, bipolar, depression, and OCD; speech or language impairments such as stuttering or selective mutism; visual impairments such as blindness; hearing impairment and hearing loss; orthopedic impairments, for example cerebral palsy; intellectual disabilities and traumatic brain injuries. Lastly, I plead with you all, please look at the BOE's budget in its entirety once it's complete. Watch or re-watch the BOE budget workshops and last year's as well. Read the FAQs. Rewatch the meetings where it was discussed and recognized by all that this year, the presented budget would be high and the reasons why. I encourage you all to please come prepared for that meeting with so as to not get lost in the details that could have been answered by review and preparation. Our BOE is working very hard on this budget, and they deserve a prepared and efficient meeting. Thank you.
Right on the dot. Thank you, Heather, and thank you for the reminder to include your address when you participate. Is there anyone else? I know a few people joined in, so this is the public participation portion. You can either raise your hand through his hand icon or hit star nine if you're on a mobile device. Going once. Going twice. All right, we will move on to 7A, Reports of Boards and Committees Responsible to the Council. Are there any updates from Birch Grove? I think I saw.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I had to find my mute button. No, Birch Grove has not met our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 1st at 6:30 VAS.
Great. Thank you. So then move on to Item 7B, Report of Town Council Liaisons. I'll just go down my list. Vice Chair Regan.
No meetings this week, so nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilman Murray.
The Agriculture Committee met last night and discussed initiatives to attract agrotourism, some alternates for the farm-to-table dinner for this year, and exploring options to fund a well at the Campbell Farm property. They meet again next month on March 7th. And the Blight Committee canceled their last meeting, so they meet later this month, as does the Historic Commission.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Murray. Counselor Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my month to cover the Board of Education, so I was fortunate enough to be able to sit in and listen in on the workshop that they had for the budgeting yesterday. It was a very thorough discussion on the funding, including the use of the ERF funding and other ways in which they could find cost savings that appears that they are still at the 3.27% increase at this point, but that there was a discussion to try and get that down to 3% if possible without going into full detail. It was a very thorough discussion, a lot of great questions asked. I can definitely say that both sides were working on trying to identify some cost savings, but also see where there could be efficiencies. One of the areas that they looked at was the issues regarding the pensions and insurance funds, where it was brought up with some of the cost savings that are available now due to decreased rates that there may be some cost revenue savings on that, so that it could be rather than looking at possible cuts or savings on school-related issues, that it could be more on the behind-the-scenes budget type of issues that they could find cost savings. So a lot of great work was done. I was glad I was able to listen in on it, and that was it, as far as for planning and zoning, since I covered the first part of the month, that they did not have their meeting yet, so nothing to report on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Luba. Councilman Uticek.
Good evening, everyone. So our meeting on January 27th, it was just, we established officers, adopted being scheduled, and adopted rules of procedure, and also discussed our spreadsheet that Ms. Hancock will be taking care of it, where we have any ideas or anything that's sent to us regarding ideas, and it's just a flow of where we are in the process with those ideas. And our next meeting for that is scheduled for February 24th at 4:30. The mental health was gonna meet last night, but with some technical difficulties, it was postponed to either next Tuesday or next Wednesday of next week. And Commission with People with Disabilities will meet next Thursday on February 17th at 6:30, and the Recreation Advisory Board meets next Monday, the 14th, at 7:00.
Thank you, Councilman Uticek. Councilman Nuccio.
We had an ARPA meeting, which Colleen reviewed, and I didn't have anything else besides that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. Counselor Khan.
Hello, everybody. EDC had a meeting, and they talked about draft two. Plus, they talk about the 711 building has a permit that they are thinking about putting a grossly in. And they talked about a long conversation about affordable housing in Tallinn. And they would love to join a meeting with the, that March 31st, we are having a meeting with planning, zoning, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. And then for me, I had two meetings. The Conservation Commission met on the 27th, where they unanimously approved Bob Urbino for head steward. They held a couple workshop sessions regarding management plans and educational events for the commission this year. They do have a meeting on Thursday, but I've been able to attend due to us having our capital budget. And the Water Commission, I believe, postponed their meeting for February and will be reconvening in March. So that is it for me. So in that case, we will move on to Item 8, New Business, 8.1, Potential Amendments to the Town Council's Rules of Procedures. And of course, and before I pass it over to Lisa, just want to thank everyone who reached out personally, directly with any concerns or comments. A lot of those were taken into consideration. An amended packet was sent out with accordance to FOIA within 24 hours of our meeting date, so you'll see some of the original proposals, as well as the strike-through amendments or any additions that were suggested by various counselors. So with that being said, I will pass it along to Lisa.
Good evening, everybody. On December 14th, the town council had a discussion regarding clarification of some of your rules of procedure and regarding how town council correspondence should be submitted or presented. So the chairperson of the town council has requested that we, a discussion for this evening. There's a desire to clarify some of the rules and to provide a little more specific information to try to provide a little more clarity. The suggested clarification is within the draft document for your discussion this evening. There's some minor language regarding the use of technology for some of your meetings, such as before it may have said microphone. Now it says our camera and other technology equipment. So it refers to that new technology in there, and recommendations came from all of you, as well as myself and Steve Jones. So we all worked together on this. In addition, we added a Section H, and we will go through all this, but I'm just giving you a highlight. This is just to kind of streamline the request for information to make sure that everybody gets the information that they need, and we try not to delay the responses to those items and provide an ability for everyone to have the responses for them to be able to make the appropriate decisions. This also requires the communication to go through the town manager with the staff. I think we changed some of that language. Just to make sure that I'm involved and know what is being asked of my staff, so that way I can follow up on things, or at least be aware of certain questions going on. Certainly, if there's a need to discuss directly with a staff person, that's fine. I just want to be aware of it and just would like to have the opportunity to say, yes, go ahead, or let me get back to you. So with that said, I am going to go to the first page here, and can everyone see that okay?
Yep.
All right. So under public hearing items, we, there used to be like a little postscript here. What I did was I just brought it right up there, because as the more you tried to put postscripts, it just got too busy and too difficult to follow. So I moved a lot of that information up here, and then Steve and I made some changes to some of the information. So for example, with the public hearing items, each item will be handled through the report of myself or whoever is appropriately to respond. There'll be discussion of questions by the council, comments and questions by the public, and written, here's where we added some information. Written testimony submitted for a public hearing may be included with the electors' name and address. They will be summarized at the meeting after those in attendance have provided the opportunity to speak. The counselor responsible for reporting correspondence will also be responsible for reporting the public hearing testimony that we received. Straw polls can be taken at the meeting. They'll be allowed at the discretion of the chairperson, and of course, are non-binding. And then there will be the normal final vote and discussion and final vote by the council. Any questions regarding this section or comments, concerns? Tammy?
I don't know if I had to raise my hand or not. We're just free-flowing it tonight or what, but I do have a couple of questions in here. I'm good with pulling it all up there, but I do have two points of clarification I'd like. For number four, written testimony received by the public hearing may be included with the electors' name and address. Either it should be or it shouldn't be, not may be, because then sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. They will be summarized at the meeting after those in attendance have provided opportunity to speak. The councilor responsible for reporting correspondence will also be responsible for reporting. In the past, we've had a lot of people say that the person who was summarizing didn't summarize what they were saying, or didn't review what they did, and only other people's. And I think this leaves it open to people to be able to decide what they're going to read in. So if we're going to do this, then we should just read it all in the record. No summarization, just read it. That way, there can be no, I didn't mean this, or I didn't say that, or the person assumed I said this and didn't say that, or I sent something in and they didn't read my opinion. They only read other people's opinions. So if we're going to get into reading every email that somebody sends in for a public hearing, because they don't want to come to a hybrid meeting or be here, then we should read the entire thing in. And then for five, straw poll, anybody can ask for a straw poll. So that's always been part of the public hearing. I don't think it should be allowed at the discretion. I think per our charter, I'm not 100% sure, but I think at any point in a public hearing, anybody can ask for a straw poll. I think if somebody asks for it, then we do a straw poll. Straw polls are non-binding, so if somebody wants to do a poll of the people who are there for the public hearing, then it should just be anybody who requests. That's it that I have for that section.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. I see Counselor Luba's hand is also raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to know if we're going to be going through this, and we're going to be exchanging questions as we go, or if we're going to save everything all at once. If you want to save everything for at the end to discuss, that's fine with me. Otherwise, I just do have a quick comment regarding right here. So looking for your direction, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Yeah, and I think it might be good, based on the interim town manager's summary, that we go through each item that has changes, and then at that point, we open up the discussion. And then as we go through the full document, once we get to the end of it, we can do a full summary discussion.
Okay. Then, given that, I'll hold any comments until the very end.
Oh, sorry. I meant if you want to say anything now for this.
Okay.
And then at the end, if there's like, as we kind of go through and workshop this, if there's a final discussion on what's been discussed, yeah.
Okay. Then, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, sort of following along on Councilman Nuccio's statements, I think that with regard to the written testimony, I agree that's either read in full, or that there was actually discussion during prior town councils about just eliminating that completely, that if people submit written testimony, either emails or anything else that they want to submit to the town council, that that's something that can, if people are interested in obtaining that, can be obtained through FOIA. It's something that, or that can alternatively be included as part of the minutes at the end, if there's a compilation of emails. But I think it's something that we either read everything in its entirety, as Ms. Nuccio was saying, or that my proposal would be is that we just eliminate it to, that way, there's no issues, and that it can be included, that people, if they want it, can either get it through FOIA, or that it be included as part of the agenda or part of the minutes afterwards. That's my suggestions, because to have the summaries, again, that we've had issues on both sides where summaries have been given, and that there's been concerns regarding what has been summarized, which have created more of an issue on how it was summarized, rather than what was actually said inside the emails. That's all I have at this point, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Luba. So at this point, I just do want to clarify, at least the language under public hearings subsection C4-5. It does say, after such public hearings, a straw poll of the registered voters and non-registered voters of the town present may be taken on each issue and may constitute a public expression of opinion for the guidance of the council. It doesn't clarify who takes the straw poll or who authorizes it. So if there is no objection, I would be fine with striking that. I think, and it does indicate, and I think, as we all know, straw polls are non-binding, so perhaps that line is not necessary, and just keep the first line of straw polls for public hearing items may be taken.
I'm good with that.
Okay. And in regards to the first sentence, I would also be okay with potentially including the full part of any public hearing communications. I think summarizing can be okay. I think if we want to include it as a part of our meeting packet or the minutes, when it's read into the record, that could also be considered. But I would like to kind of go through the rest of the packet before we go back to that discussion, since I think we have another top topic in the proposed changes that will fall under that same concern. So with that being said, Lisa, if you want to go, sorry, John, your hand was up.
Yeah. So Steve, I kind of missed what you said there. I had a comment about the written testimony submitted in by email. My suggestion would be if there's a public hearing item, then we read the entire thing into the record. But we get a lot of emails, so I would suggest eliminating the parts of the email that's meant for the town council, reading that into the record during the regular meeting. But if there's an action item, or if there's a public hearing on the agenda that we're currently on, then any items that came in, I would suggest reading those directly into the record. So I think we can minimize the time we spend with correspondence to council if we handle it that way. That's just my thought on that one.
Sorry, my apologies. Can you clarify that a little bit, John? When you're saying reading into the record, you meant reading the whole correspondence?
Right. So reading the whole correspondence, if there's an item on the agenda that's a public hearing item, I would recommend reading it into the record. But we get a lot of email about a lot of different topics, so I would suggest eliminating the part of correspondence to council that acknowledges and recognizes every email that we get from the public, because my opinion is that those emails are meant for the town council members and not necessarily for the public. That would be my.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate that clarification. All right, Lisa, if you want to move on to 7A, unless there's any other hands raised for this topic.
I don't see. John's still up, but I'm working. All right. Reports of boards and commissions to council. This section is, because in the past, there's been some confusion on who reports in this section. This is really reserved for the boards and commissions to come to the council and update the town council on their activities or bring ideas to the council. They'll be handled in the following manner. They will, the appropriate official will report to the council, and then there'll be discussions and questions by the council. Then they'll ask for input from the town manager, and, you know, if I can provide it at that point, I shall. Otherwise, maybe something that would have to be addressed in the future. For example, if a commission should come forward and say, we think you should hire three public workspeople. Okay, I'm just making something up. You know, certainly, I wouldn't be at liberty to be able to give a response at that time, but, you know, could bring it back at a later date for discussion going forward. So the idea of that is to, you know, if I can give input at that point, that would be great. What's that?
All right. Let's open up the floor to counselors, if they want to raise their hand, if they have any questions. Otherwise, if there's no objections, I'll take Councilman Nuccio.
So I think Lisa just answered my question, because I wasn't sure on the number four on this, the straw poll. So if I'm hearing you correctly, this is basically any commission or board that reports to the council, which we know there are several. If they decide, if they're on our agenda, like the Mental Health Task Force was, they come forward and say, you know, we want you to consider this contract for mental health services. At that point, I guess I'm not sure why four is here, because would we then say, as a council, we're going to take a straw poll whether or not we want to put that on an agenda? I guess that's my only concern is four, is I don't understand why we would be doing a straw poll to put it on the agenda.
So I think the intent, if you want me answering, Lisa, I think the intent by four was to, after a report was given, to kind of give a general consent of, do we want this to be on a future agenda without it necessarily being an agenda item, because there's really no formal vote and no resolution to take place. So this was seen more as, I think, kind of referring to the Mental Health Task Force discussion that you used as an example. We kind of conducted a bit of a straw poll if we were okay referring their request to the ARPA Subcommittee, and so that was kind of taken as a non-binding poll, but seeing the general agreement, I think, at that point, Lisa was able to take direction from the chair and the vice chair and the rest of the council to move forward with that.
So are we thinking that this is going to, I guess it just seems weird to me that we're putting this there, because it's only happened once. But I don't know that we have to really put that in writing, I guess. I don't know. I think I get confused. That's fine. I think it just.
That's okay. And I think if there's confusion behind it, and there's not seen that a necessity for it, then that would be fine. I think it was mostly, I think, from Lisa's end. If you want to add anything, Lisa, just to have a framework of direction that council will take, so that a border commission that comes to report something kind of knows what the council will do with their report.
Right. I mean, there may be items brought forward by other commissions. I know we have a couple others that have requests coming down the pike, and this just gives me some direction as to, do you want it on another agenda to discuss it? Most likely, you do. It just clarifies it right then and there, or you don't have to do a straw poll. It's just if there's a recommendation by the commission that they'd like to do something special that requires funding or whatever, it may be something you might want to add to a future agenda so that you can take action and discuss it a little more thoroughly than the commission report. It just gives me a little direction as to how you want to proceed with it. And that, it also tells me that there's consensus, because there may be two of you that want to proceed, and maybe the rest of the council doesn't, and, you know, that's up to all of you, how you want to work with that. I think everyone should have a voice. Doesn't matter to me if it's there or not. It's up to all of you.
Does that make sense to Councilman Nuccio at all?
I think so. I just don't know if it's an extraneous step that we may not really need, but I'm open to discussing it at the end, if anybody else has an opinion.
Anyone else with a concern, or actually, I'll just put it out this, at this point, is there any objection if this was removed in its entirety? And instead, we just stuck with one through three, where it's the report from the border commission, discussion and questions, and then input from the town manager. And that's the basic cycle. Seeing no objection, then Lisa, I guess we can go ahead and just strike four from that section.
Okay. Next one. For the town council liaisons, counselors should identify the border commission, like you usually do, that represent and state, you know, your attendance at the meeting, or if you weren't able to attend, you know, whatever you have. Counselors should briefly summarize any actions that were taken or requests from that board or commission to the town council. So what we're trying to do is streamline this a little bit. And again, certainly up to all of you, how you want to proceed, but it's more to just briefly get through it. If you attended a meeting and nothing really happened, that was where they took an action or want something from the town council to proceed with, it just kind of keeps it to that lower level, rather than getting into a bunch of detail about everything that they may have discussed at a meeting, which, you know, that's up to you, but it just takes up an awful lot of time. There are minutes out there that can be read if people want to know what's going on in the meeting. However, if there was something that was extremely important discussed, or they may have said, you know, would town council consider entertaining? they may have said, you know, would town council consider entertaining some sort of option, that would be something that you'd want to bring back to the town council for further discussion, because you are the liaison to that board of commission. Then normally you would say when the next date of the next regular meeting is for that commission.
All right, Council Mnuchio.
Thank you. I like how we're doing it now. I think it gives a brief overview. I think all the councillors do a really good job at reporting what they have and we are all in so many minutes and just to go back, if we have to do that, we'll do it, but we'd have to go back into a lot of minutes and research everybody's work that they've been working on for the entire town. So I would like it to keep it as is.
All right, thank you, Council Mnuchio. Council Mnuchio.
So, um, I don't have a problem with the most of one. I don't necessarily think we have to state attendance or the, at the most recent meeting, because normally somebody will say that I wasn't able to make the meeting, but the minutes are or the last meeting I was at, that I don't necessarily think we need to really do that one, the brief summary, et cetera. That's fine. And the last one, I, I don't know that we really need to announce the date of the next regular meeting. All of these commissions have pretty standard regular meetings. I don't, I don't know the exact dates on any given day. I have my calendar has about fifty things on it in any given week, and I go by day by day. So like, I know when I have to go to Eastern Highland Health District. I know when the next planning one is, a permanent celebration. I know when the next ARPA one is, but if you ask me today those dates, I'm going to say, give me a few minutes so I can start digging through my thing. So I don't mind with, you know, identifying. But this to me is kind of what we already do. I don't think we need to put the other things in here about stating attendance or when the next meeting is. That's just my opinion. I don't mind the clarification that you should identify the board and commission and give a brief summary, but the rest of it, I don't know if we really need. And with Colleen on, I think if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Council Mnuchio. So I would be okay with leaving the first portion of one where it's councillors should identify the border commission they, they represent or are liaison to and leave it at that as the first period, first sentence. Then leave the second as briefly summarizing and then if there's no objection, striking three. Because like you said, we generally announce past meetings in our reports and there are agendas and standing meeting schedules for most boards and commissions. Is there any objection to that as proposed? Oh, Councilman Murray.
Could you clarify what you were proposing for number two?
Number two is being left as is. Number one, I, I proposed, we just shortened it to councillors should identify the board or commission that they represent. And that's it for that, that first line.
So I, I agree with what was previously stated. I think I like the way we're doing it now and I wouldn't want our rules to restrict what we can report. So.
So in that case, you're, you're saying we should strike two in its entirety?
Or councillors should briefly summarize the meeting.
So councillors should briefly summarize the meeting from that border commission to the council.
Yep.
Is there anyone that would object to that change? Seeing none, Lisa, are you good with that? Okay. And then we'll just strike three in its entirety, because we obviously report on past meetings. We don't necessarily need to report on future meetings. So then moving on to twelve.
Correspondence to council. I think this was the biggest one that there was a lot of questions about. Communications to the council should be shared as follows. The council, the town council shall designate a councillor for the term to present the communications at the next council meeting after their receipt, I guess, whenever they have it. So that's just designating a person to manage all the communications for every meeting until they decide someone else is going to do it. The communication should be highly summarized as follows. Identify that communication such as an email or mail from a resident business, et cetera. And then briefly summarize the topic of the communication, whether the sender is in support or against if applicable.
All right, Council Mnuchio followed by councillor Regan, and then councillor Luba.
So I, I guess I want to start out with, I think this is an area we can probably talk a little bit about, because you know, this is new from the council. It's only been here as long as I've been here, and I don't think I've been here that long. This is the start of my fifth year. So I guess I would like to ask the council, what exactly are we trying to use this for? Because in the past, when we first came on council for the first, I want to say, at least half a year. This was really just used for any communications that the chair got or anybody got in the mail that was not read into the public record. And then it was given to the secretary to put in the public record. So Steve, you'll know when you'll start getting them. If you haven't already, you're going to get emails from, you know, the wireless companies that want to do stuff up on the, the wireless towers and things like that. That's a communication that comes to the council that is not in the public record. So you have to give that to the secretary. They scan it in, it becomes part of the record. One councillor wanted to start summarizing the emails and nobody really had a strong feeling for or against, so said fine, right? So as Mr. Regan has said, you know, the emails that we all get, we all get. And any emails that I get individually, you guys don't get. So, and I don't go and read my individual, like I got fifteen emails from these people and this is what they said. You didn't get them, but I got them. So I guess I'm wondering, what do we want correspondence to council to look like, to be? And whether or not reading in, you know, we got fifteen emails for this and twenty-seven emails against this. And as I said, there were a lot of complaints before about, well, I didn't say that and this person said that and this, you know, it, it just kind of turns into whether or not somebody feels like they've been fairly represented by the person who was reading it. And if we're all getting these emails, they're all foiaable, they're all on the public record, they're available. So I guess I, I would like to have a little robust conversation about what exactly we're trying to accomplish here, so we can set some ground rules up for how we want to do it.
Okay, thank you, Council Mnuchio. So I guess to respond at least from my perspective on the intent is we actually do have examples from as far back as two thousand where the reporting of the minutes includes emails and actually it named the residents regarding their support for a particular topic. But in terms of modern usage, it actually goes as close as twenty thirteen where communications were reported and it was a brief summary. So it, it's mostly been a matter of, it has been inconsistent. A lot of it was letters from businesses asking for funding like a tri-town shelter or United Way. But it's been kind of spotty in the past ten years where we've kind of reported resident emails as a part of the correspondence, regardless if it was physical mail or email. So that's where there's some inconsistencies and the intent here was to try and make a consistent effort. In terms of summarizing them, I think the intent was is to A, not read it into the record so that you know, we don't overextend the council's time reading these, but also providing that high-level summary similar to the public hearing item, that a summary would be sufficient to recognize a resident has contacted the council and raised an issue or made a statement in support or against a certain item. So that's at least my perspective on, on the intent of this, this item. Is to both clarification of our past precedent as well as, so you said, a standard as well as offer the opportunity for residents to know that they've, their correspondence has been received by the council.
So I respect that. I think it's good that, you know, we sit down and talk about the inconsistencies and try and put something forward going forward. So we don't read in, or we shouldn't read in, I would think, the people's names and what they said. Or this resident who's a business owner is against this, or that, you know, especially when it's something that we're talking about, whether it be budget or something that someone else may have a strong opinion on. I think it creates a more divisiveness or this person does that and that person does this. So are we thinking we received several emails or we received twenty emails and five were for and fifteen were against? Like, I, I'm really trying to think of how we do this in a way that's fair to the people that are put in. And also that we, people know that we got correspondence on this without it being misconstrued, I guess, is the best word I can think of.
Yeah, I think that's where, you know, going back those many years that people were actually named, and I figured to reach sort of a compromise that rather than having anyone who reports correspondence, name the person who sent it, we just say an email from a resident, because I think as was said by, I think either yourself or councillor Luba. If a resident was curious who sent in a complaint, say about, you know, an animal that wasn't, that was left on the side of the road and public works didn't pick it up fast enough. If they wanted to know who was complaining about it, they could FOIA it themselves, but we would just summarize to the public that, that was a particular issue raised by a resident and we're acknowledging receipt of that, that correspondence or, or concern. But in terms of the public hearing items, or, or even just for this section, we'll just stick to the correspondence to council. If we received, you know, say five letters, I guess actually one that was as a good example would be February twelfth, twenty thirteen, their correspondence to council indicates letters from one, two, three, four, five, I think four or five residents stating they are all in favor of the library expansion. They named all those people, but you could say instead, letters from four residents stating they're, they're in favor of the library expansion. So it provides that summary, but also that privacy to, to the residents that submit those correspondences.
I think, I, I think I would be good with that. I'm going to let everybody else go. I, I think I pretty much put what I, what I think. So we'll listen to what everybody else has to say.
And, and I guess, yeah, that's, that's also the intent with the public hearing item. I think we have seen over the years, a higher volume of residents, even though we've, through this pandemic and through Zoom, seen an increased participation. I think we've seen over the past few years, an increased volume of emails as form of communication rather than an increase in, you know, in-person public participation that is a part of the record. So it's trying to kind of strike that balance and kind of give some due fairness to residents that attend meetings as well as those who maybe can't, but want to submit information or, or thoughts to the council. But no, thank you, Council Mnuchio. I do appreciate that. And with that being said, I think councillor vice chair Regan was next, followed by councillor Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really struggle to see the value of talking about the correspondence to council. What I think is that residents who have an issue about anything that may be going on in town have the ability to contact the town council. But I don't see the value of talking about that i- in our meetings. Maybe there's a way to consolidate these emails and making them available for public, or as was mentioned before, they, they could be made available through a FOIA request. But I, I would advocate just striking this from our future agendas altogether. And that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillor vice chair Regan. I do appreciate it. Just if you don't mind me responding, I think my intent, or at least the intent of this, this being considered is sort of a form of transparency, because if we struck, struck correspondence to the council from the full records, we would also be discounting any businesses or state communications regarding issues. And if a future agenda item came up and people questioned why and we said, oh, well, we received correspondence to the council that this was an important issue and we need to address it. You know, then they'd, they'd be backtracking to try and figure, okay, well, why wasn't it a part of the minutes that you got this information? Now you're acting on this item based off of that correspondence. Or even if we received correspondence regarding an active topic and let's say a councillor refers to those correspondences in their support or opposition. If we don't publish them in full, if we just summarize them, we avoid a lengthy meeting packet. But notify residents that that's part of our deliberations, so that then if they want to know more, they can make that separate FOIA request that I believe councillor Luba had mentioned, to receive the full documentation. So that's, that's the intent behind it.
Okay, yeah, and I understand that. And I just, in, in my time here on the council, four plus years at this point, summarization has been an issue multiple times. So as we've already talked about it tonight, is, is sometimes people don't think that their, their emails are being summarized correctly and, and you know, they may think that they're not being represented properly. So you know, I don't know if there's a way to be, they can be consolidated and made available. But I do know that they're available through a FOIA request. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Regan. Move on to councillor Luba, followed by councillor Mnuchio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank you very much for that, for that clarification on your position. I think that really helped me sort of formulate my, my opinion on this. Well, I think it's something that, seeing what the, seeing both sides, I think there that the chair brought up a value in at least stating that these emails were received on this issue. I think that if we were going to say, if we were, rather than even saying summarizing, I think that the best way to address this, so that there's no issues regarding us interpreting what somebody is saying, is simply saying, we received ten emails addressing this issue. Move on. We received this correspondence from this state agency or from this group. And, you know, and just move on without even, you know, just saying that it addressed this issue. These are, and then we could simply say that, you know, this was our consideration. If a council member feels that it's something that they want to bring up during discussion of an issue, they can say then at that point that we received correspondence and this is how, this is what I, this is what it affected me and my vote, and this is the reason why. But I think in a correspondence to council, I think just simply summarizing saying we received ten letters or fifteen letters addressing this specific issue without saying what it was, without saying what their position is or anything else, that way there's no concerns. I think that, that's something that, that I would be able to support. And I think that's the best way to sort of as a compromise, rather than getting concerned about, are we adequately summarizing what somebody is saying? Is it clear that they're supporting it? Because some people may say, I support this in one spot, but not here in another spot. So rather than try, us trying to interpret what's being said, I think simply saying, this is what, this is how many we got on this issue. Period, end of story, move on. That way people can see that we did receive letters on this issue on this certain date. And if they want to go back and review it, they have a date and timeframe in which they could review it and make specific FOIA requests if necessary. But thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your input on that. That helped clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem at all, councillor Luba. So just to take some of your input back in, so for, for twelve subsection two, if we had it read as the communication should be highly summarized as follows, identify that a communication such as an email or mail from a resident business, et cetera, you know, was received. And then B would be identify the topic of the communication, whether the sender is in support or against if applicable. Or would you want just summarize the top or identify the topic of communication? And that's it. Don't say whether or not they were in support or against.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That, I would simply ask that it say that identify the topic without saying it was for or against. I think that's, I think just the topic would be appropriate. And then, because again, we don't want to be necessarily trying to interpret what somebody is saying. And I think it's something that if people want to see it, they, see what the input is, they can make that request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Luba. Councilman Mnuchio.
Thank you. I, I really like councillor Luba's suggestion on putting something in there and just really briefly saying what the topic is without giving any sway into one way. Sometimes people do that and they don't even realize they're doing it. Either that, if we could include them in the packets like they were in the past that you mentioned, Steve, just blocking out the resident's name and address, and that's another way. And that way, it would prevent anybody having to FOIA or something because it's already right there in the packet. That's it for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Mnuchio. Councilman Mnuchio.
Um, I believe when we talked about doing that in the past, Colleen, there's a, there's a large expense related to doing it because we have to store all of our minutes electronically. And if we get seventy-five emails from people, we have to copy each one of them in and it makes the minute package massive. And then it also takes up much more room on the electronic storage. Much more room on the electronic storage, um, which is why I believe it was stopped. Lisa shaking her head. So Lisa, you might want to.
Time as well, um, you know, the stuff, the the time that it takes to stack, put it together, to scan it all in. To to make it as part of the package. Um, it, you're right. It takes up a lot of data storage, which we are constantly having to deal with that issue. And it could become very costly, whereas, you know, the document could just be stored in in the uh, the files. Rather than scanned in.
Okay, clarification. Maybe we can come up with something else, but thank you, Tammy and Lisa for explaining that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Murray.
Thank you. I I think this is uh, an important. Thing for us to recognize that we received communication from. A resident or a business or a local organization or group. Recognizing publicly and reiterating that we are available. Uh, to our constituents, uh, that we listen to them. I I think that's really important.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Murray. So just before we move on, I move on, just to summarize for Lisa, I know who's. Studiously taking notes on the changes. So for item twelve, we would it would read. Communications to the council should be shared as follows. One, council shall designate a counselor for the term to present the communications of the next council meeting. Two, communications should be highly summarized as follows. Identify that a communication was received, such as an email or mail from resident business, et cetera. And then B, briefly summarize the topic of the communication. And then that would be it. Uh, Council Murray.
Sorry, I um, wonder if. Number one, if we want to say at the next council meeting or at each regular council meeting.
I would say maybe at each regular council meeting. Because I think that's a good point is we wouldn't want a whole bunch of, like, we don't have it in our agenda, say if we were having. A joint meeting.
Special meeting.
In a special meeting and suddenly there was a go, well, there's correspondent, we received all this correspondence to council. Should that be included or no? Should it should be explicitly only for regular council meetings? Because that's the structure of the meeting. Uh, Councilman Nuccio.
Now I'm confused again. So council should designate a counselor for the term. So that means we pick one person for the whole term. To present the communication at the next council meeting or at the.
At at each regular council meeting.
Okay, that's better. Yeah.
Clarify that we're not saying next could be, could fall under the auspices of a special meeting or a budget meeting that. You know, then they have, we have to have in every single packet that we receive correspondence from council, even if it's not a relevant meeting to present that information.
Thank you for clarifying. That makes sense now.
No problem. So are you good, Lisa?
This is probably more, I don't know, a technical question, but. I know Katie's doing the correspondence now and she does, I think, a good job, but is it now something that. Has to be voted on or the chair can just appoint something or we're just status quo and leave it like. Who's doing it now? Or is it a rotating thing? I'm just, I don't know if it needs to be more clarified now that's what's really getting into it.
I think we're we're good as is if there's no objection. I know that it was originally under Councilwoman Felucy and then Councilwoman. Murray, there's, you know, took over their vacancy. So we kind of let them kind of inherit that role. As they did for the boards and commissions that Councilwoman Felucy was a liaison for. But I think in terms of the general structure, it kind of would fall under our organizational meeting where we establish liaisons to boards and commissions. I think it would just fall as an additional item to discuss is is uh. You know, and then that would be a part of a full vote by the council to approve um, those. Liaison chips and other positions. If that makes sense, Councilman Uchek.
It does. I just want to make sure that we're not missing a step. So, thank you.
Okay, no worries. All right, no other discussion? All right.
This next one's fairly straightforward and easy. It's just basically changing the technology. That is here for. When a person comes up to speak, usually they would have to be to come up to use the microphone. In this case, we're just identifying that whatever electronic equipment that we have, such as the owl camera for the hybrid system. A microphone, things like that. Um, and then just to provide their name and address. But it was just a minor.
Yeah.
Clarification for technology.
Are there any objections that staying as is proposed? Right, seeing none, you should, you can move forward. I think the next one is a small addition to F.
Yeah, uh, this one is just under your new business if um, something is tabled or or. Brought on to the the next meeting, it just says, you know, there may have been a reason why it was tabled. So it also just said, um, you're not going to reduplicate everything on the next agenda that was with the last agenda. But also, um. It does allow for additional information because maybe that's what was needed. And that's why a meeting may have been postponed. So it just says, and may include any additional required information that. That you might have to have. It just kind of.
Yeah.
Documents, nothing big there.
Is there any objection to that being added as proposed? Right, seeing none, we'll move on to new item H or new section H.
You deleted most of it. Now I don't know what I want here.
So if if it's okay to summarize, I know I said some of those changes were sent in. Essentially, there was, there were some concerns that I think you had raised, Lisa, and I know that there are some others. So. In essence, we kind of took a lot of and a lot of concerns from council members out the way it was worded. So the intent of just striking it all, making a one-sentence identifier, just as town council members, communications with town staff shall be in compliance with. Charter subsection C four dash nine. I think it leaves pretty clear. And if anyone has questions, they can refer to you. And then the second portion was questions from council members regarding agenda items sent via email to the town manager should be also copied to the chair and vice chairperson. A reasonable effort will be made to provide answers ahead of meeting and responses be shared with all council members. So this was the, the inspiration for this or the intent of it. Was essentially when there are questions or concerns about agenda items, whether they're upcoming or if they're future planned, you know, we usually try to outline if there's any upcoming. Uh, meeting topics that when there are questions or concerns from council members that, you know, the chair and vice chair that helps set and. Finalize the agenda are aware of these concerns and can provide that input to Lisa if we need certain information. Or questions answered or people in attendance. Um, it helps us refine and create a better agenda item for the whole council to review. So and then in terms of sharing that information, I think again, it's about kind of creating an equity or equality in access of the information. So that, you know, every counselor has as many tools in their toolbox to uh, make a sound decision on an agenda item. And then the last line was a request, I believe, from Lisa, if I remember correctly, uh, just with how busy the town. Has been with the pandemic, but even just in general that, you know. I know Lisa, when I wanted to speak with them earlier today, you know, they were in meetings all day, you know, so that's kind of the mindfulness that. We're making requests of town staff, you know, that they have other duties they were responsible for throughout the day. Um, it wasn't seen as a detractor. I think we should always utilize our town manager as an information resource, but. It was just more of a mindfulness uh, statement. But with that being said, Councilman Nuccio, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I appreciate that. So. I have a lot of issue with this whole section um, in regard to the fact that this entire document, if you look at everything about this. It is about our rules of procedure during our meetings. H has nothing to do with our rules of procedure during our meetings. The first section, uh, council members communicating with town staff to be in compliance with the charter, I don't think we need to. In our procedure rules, say that we should be following what's in the charter, we should. Know what's in the charter, we should be following what's in the charter. Um, the second section, the questions from council members regarding agenda items. Uh, my concern here is a little bit of. The fact that if we're going to send emails to the town manager, like I've done this in the past, I've done with Steve Werbner and all that. I've said before a meeting, um, here's questions that I'm thinking I'm going to have for this. But there was never like. Really answers gathered for me and then sent back to the whole council. Because this is dangerously close to doing business behind behind closed doors. Um, when we ask questions, it should be asked in public, the answer should be provided in public. So everybody has the ability to hear that. If it's a more, if it's easier to say, hey, here's a set of questions that I'm going to ask. Or here's the things that I'm curious about, like for instance, the capital budget that's coming up, right? I've, this is my fifth year here. We have all the heads of people there, you know, we ask questions, they answer and all that we. The fact that we have now sent questions over and Lisa has sent answers back. That needs to be put in the record a hundred percent. And we should still be able to talk, we should actually not still be able to. We should have to talk about that in public because that's, the public is entitled to our questions and answers also. So I don't, um. This is just dangerously close for me. This can be very easily construed as us doing business. Um, and I don't. I just don't really like that very much. And the last sentence, the um, I understand that everybody's really busy. I do. You know, I think we all are, everybody is in the world here, but. We are an elected body that has to be able to make ordinance for the town. And if we need the staff to assist us with helping with that, then. I don't, that's that's part of the role, I guess. That's part of the job, both theirs and ours across the board, is to have the staff. Be able to assist us make the decisions. So I don't think H belongs in our rules of procedure. Um, if it does stay, I think we need to figure out something very serious here for the second one. I don't think um, we should be having the emails and the stuff sent back to the whole um, town council on a regular basis. Um, if we want to send over questions or things that we might want to discuss. Um, but that that also that can't limit it. Like, I don't know how many other people, I just finished reviewing the capital budget um, today. And I'm just getting all my questions together now. Um, so I'm still going to have all those questions when we meet on Thursday. Um, I I don't want to curtail people asking questions in meetings. So this one here, I just, I don't think this necessarily belongs in our rules of procedure, our meeting rules of procedure. Um, thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councilman Nuccio. And that's where, um, at least for that second paragraph, I know any of the concerns with H in general. But for that second paragraph, that's why it was intended to be fairly explicit that having three council members on the correspondence would. Ensure that it would not be constituting a legal business or or an illegal meeting. I know in the past and other boards and commissions have dealt with this issue where everybody starts replying all to a chain email if they don't BCC. So this kind of created a more standard uh, rule of procedure that has point people in leadership that can be communicated to by one council member. And then the town manager is on copy kind of as the head administrator of the town. So that was the intent behind that. Because I know that dangerously close that is, that is something that was uh, considered when this was crafted.
I think my concern really though, Steve, gets to it then being sent back out to the whole town council. Like if you look at, for instance, um, I'm going to bring up the Board of Ed, right? There, they have their whole FAQ thing. They send over questions to the town, to the superintendent. He creates this massive list of all the questions that they're asking in that. And that only stays with the Board of Ed. Nobody else gets that. So it's not like a big public document that says, here's what the Board of Ed has asked and here's the answers to it. Unless you go over and specifically ask for it. So you're not, you're not given the opportunity to understand what questions are being asked. And and seeing the responses back as a regular citizen. So it's not so much the me take it and copy you and John on it. I don't care. I'll copy anybody on my questions. I have a problem with that. My, my concern is just then it's all taken and summarized and sent back out to everybody else. And that curtails conversation unless we're going to them to read that entire document into record. So the public can hear the conversations that we're having as a council. That to me is, that's where the, my concern is.
No, thank you. And I'll definitely keep that in mind in terms of responses being shared with all council members. No, I I can understand that. I think the the intent there was, yeah, to have all the toolbox, all the materials. But I think in in as an example, uh, just to keep the conversation going, I think the capital budget. Um, and some of these requests for information and questions, I believe it is the intent and Lisa might be able to clarify that those questions would be a part of the. Meeting packet so that the public was aware that questions were requested in advance. Is that correct, Lisa?
My understanding is that the questions were going to be discussed at the meeting, but I'm I'm not sure. Um, I mean, I could. I could make it part of the packet. If you'd like. Pretty much alls I had was the presentation.
Yeah. I think that was my intent. I know everyone's going to have questions regardless. And I know we we do try to be concise and ask as many questions as we. Need to at the same time, knowing it's a public hearing item. Just saying as an example that, you know, we also are mindful that it is a meeting for the public to ask questions as well that maybe we don't have. But um, but no, I'll definitely keep that in mind. Uh, so sorry, with that being said, Councilwoman Nuccio, did you have any other input?
I can't get my mute off, sorry. No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Luba, followed by Councilwoman Murray.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, that um, I think that uh, I, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said to this point. My biggest concern is with the emails going back and forth, where even if it's something that. Uh, I ask a question for Lisa because I've, I as practiced, uh, Mr. Chair, you know, that I, I traditionally. Include you as well as uh, as well as Vice Chair in any correspondence that I have that's of significance. Where there's a significant issue or significant concern that I have, I'll CC you whenever I forward it a question to Ms. Hancock. Um, I have no issue with that. Uh, I think the biggest issue, which I agree with Ms. Nucci on, is if this. Um, if something is put back out to answer all, because then it does become an issue of an open, of a, uh, open meeting issue. And that that really, if it's an email that, even if it's a question that I ask, and then it's sent out to everybody. Um, that it may come an issue of that's now considered uh, private correspondence between, you know, between everybody. Uh, an open, open meeting issue. Uh, and so I think that the best thing to do in that case is. Uh, if we're, if one of us answers the que- or ask a question of uh, of Ms. Hancock. To have it answered directly to that council member. But then if there's a series of questions that are addressing the same issue, is to keep a basically a running list of what those questions are. As well as the answers, as we did like with the um, a prime example would be when we were getting the update from Eastern Highland Health District. I think all of us had questions out there. And I think that uh, that Ms. Hancock did an outstanding job where uh. Put together all the questions that were put forward. And then that there was each answer for the questions summarized by uh, by Rob inside uh, inside that document. And that was included as part of our agenda. I think that's something that would be really, I think that would solve this issue. Where that we put all of our questions to uh, to to miss. Have, you know, to address issue like the budget or something else, put them forward and then have it saved where it's the document is sent out as part of the uh, part of the agenda packet. And then sent to us as a, as a document, because after it's already included inside the agenda, it's no longer an issue regarding a uh, a closed meeting. And then we can openly discuss it on the record since uh, uh, as part of, as part of our discussions. So I think that's the best way to handle this. No, thank you. Uh, but I, that's, that's, that's my summary, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councilor Luba. So you actually, I think, I think I may have mentioned this to at least one counselor. You were the example that I set with this paragraph of why, what the intent was is because you do make a very good effort of copying John and myself on any communication to Lisa. Of of note. So um, if I'm hearing your summary.
I'm glad I could be a good example for something. I'm glad I could be a good example for something.
You gotta be once in a while, right, but, um, but so to summarize your, your comments, if we were to keep every, the first couple of lines. But then the last one is responses will be shared with all council members. Through the, through the meeting packet or through the, you know, through the meeting packet. Would that be then a reasonable compromise for that concern that then it's an item that's sent to the counselors through. A document that, that's also publicly accessible.
Yeah, I think that that would be, uh, that's something that would, would address some of my concerns regarding that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, Councilor Murray.
I don't, uh, Lisa looked like she wanted to say something, I don't know if.
Nope, she shook her head, she says no.
You were first, I'll go after you if it's okay.
Okay, it's not a big deal. I, I guess I had a little bit of. Feedback based on the conversation. That happened before I started speaking. I see rules of procedure to be regulations in conducting business and. I don't think that happens exclusively within. Meetings, uh, we do ask questions outside of meetings as, uh, Councilor Nuccio mentioned. Sometimes the members of the town staff are extremely essential and. Important to our ability to conduct business, so I think. The first sentence is relevant in this, I think this section is relevant to. This document and specifically the first section, uh, the first sentence as well. I liked, uh, Councilor Luba's suggestion about having questions and answers included in the meeting packet. I just wonder what happens. When questions come in after the meeting packet is distributed to the council. A lot of times my, my questions about things that are on the agenda don't come up until I've had a chance to read the packet. So while I do definitely think that we should, you know, I, I love the idea of including it in the pack and I wonder what happens if we ask questions. You know, on, on Monday or even Tuesday of a meeting day and we get a written response. How do we ensure that that is appropriately disseminated? And I also wanted to say that I agree with what you said, Mr. Chair, that responses that come in writing. I, I think that they should be shared with all council members, um, that this becomes. An accessibility issue and an equality issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murray, so I think part of the answer to that, and I'll at least chime in as well in a moment. If they had additional input is. The second line, a reasonable effort will be made to provide answers ahead of the meeting, so. If, if you have a question that's on a Monday or Tuesday that can't be put in the packet, I mean, I know as an example with the amended changes. We can update the packet within twenty four hours, obviously, it's not the ideal situation. But it, we do have the opportunity to update the packet as long as it's amended within twenty four hours of the meeting date. So I would say it would fall into that a reasonable effort was made. And then for the responses being shared, now I think we could also possibly update that language is. You know, so responses shall be shared with all council members through, uh, publishing responses in the meeting packet or something around those lines. If that makes sense to everyone, if there's no objection to that.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I don't think I get it.
So it was responses shall be shared with, with, with council members through. Through adding them to the meeting packet or through publishing in the meeting packet, those, those responses, similar to I think what Councilor Luba said when we had our. Questions to the health district, that, that they were incorporated into the packet as, as questions that could be reviewed. By, um, Rob Miller at that time or, you know, seen by the public that all these questions were asked in advance, so. I think that's, that's the intent of that last sentence, if Councilor Luba's hand is raised, just wanna recognize that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I mean, one of the things that I also wanted to, to make sure is that. I don't think that everything, like all of our correspondence with the town staff, with, uh, with Ms. Hancock. That all that needs to be included inside, uh, in, inside our, our meeting minutes or anything like that, or like, uh, an agenda. Because a lot of times there could be questions where we're just asking for clarification on certain issues or, um, or other things where it's not a. Public hearing issue or it's not a public decision issue, um, so I don't think that we need that, but if it's something that's on the. Agenda where it's going to be an issue for discussion amongst the entire town council. That we need to be, that, that we're asking questions about, that's where I think that's where it would come into play about having that put out. But I don't think that we need to like, you know, when I asked Ms. Hancock, um, an issue regarding, you know, what came up with the, with the nominations commission. A nomination committee, you know, and the correspondence we have with that, I don't think that's something that needs to be put out there or included. But if it's something that we, that's gonna be added onto the agenda to be addressed and discussed amongst the board for, for a decision to be made. Then that's where I think it's something that we can have it put on and the questions that all, or all council members ask. Should then, could then be summarized and addressed at that point, I don't know if that makes sense.
It, it does, and I think that's where, um, the intent of H does seem, uh, germane to. The pack, to this entire packet is because it, this is all in reference to item prep, so perhaps maybe the first line of item H is. Could be amended to say that, you know, uh, where is it? That town council members communication with town staff regarding agenda items shall be in compliance with charter. Subsection C four dash nine, and then we just make it explicit in each line that, you know, we're talking about agenda items. That are upcoming in our, on our meeting packets for business.
Okay, thank you, that, 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 that makes it clear and I, I, that's something that I think I could align with, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, Councilman Nuccio followed by Councilman Murray.
So I think that, I think that would be helpful, Steve, cuz I think that changes the entire tenor of this, if we're talking about. It's something to do with an agenda item, um, then if that's the case, then. I get that, I do understand what Colleen is saying though, because we don't get the packet until Thursday before a meeting. And in order for us to get, I think actually maybe it was Katie who said it, not Colleen, sorry Katie. You know, if we get the agenda on a Thursday and we're busy and don't read it until a Monday. And read the backup then, really, there's, there's no adequate time for us to send in questions, get answers back and get it to everybody and all that other stuff, so. Uh, I think if we made it about, um, agenda items and copying, um, the chair and vice chair on there, I'd be good with that. Uh, in relation to that, cuz as Lou said. God, I, I don't even wanna know how many emails I've sent to town manager in the last five years, right, and. And all of us are equally elected officials, we all have the same access to the town manager as anybody else, there's no, there's never a gatekeeper. To the questions to the town manager, there shouldn't be, cuz we are all equally elected here, so, um. I, I don't wanna put any barriers in place of people thinking that they can't ask questions of Lisa unless it goes through a gatekeeper kind of a thing. But in regards to something that's on the agenda, then it makes sense, so you guys have an idea of where everybody is going. Question wise, I still would think that I still, I still don't necessarily agree with all of the questions and answers coming out to all of the counselors. Unless it's something that is gonna be very clearly put in the record, but, um, that's, that's my sticking point, you know, I, that's.
Yeah, I hear you. No, that's where, that's where I think the clarifying language that it would be in the packet means it's not only accessible to all counselors, it's also a public document that I think helps. The public know that utilizing these questions to guide our decision making on a, on a given topic.
Okay.
All right, uh, Councilman Murray for a second time.
Thank you, um, I actually, uh, in those previous comments, my, uh, question was resolved, but, uh. I did just wanna thanks, thank you, Tammy, for that compliment of confusing me with Colleen, you can confuse me with Colleen anytime.
I'll keep that in mind, I'll just confuse y'all. Just don't confuse me with Lou, please.
You wouldn't be so lucky.
I'll do my best, yeah.
All right, Councilman Gudicke.
So I know going back to November when, um, I raised the question of any. When we ever have a question, the channel and I was told to go. Respectfully was told, a nice way to go through the chair and the chair would communicate it to Lisa, is that what. I've read over the charter, that C four dash nine, and it says that we should be going through. I think it says we go in through the town manager if we need to ask a question to other departments, is that accurate when I'm asking that question?
Yeah, no, I think it may be back in November, it was more so, I think, just informally, I think regarding agenda items or topics, you could go through the, the, the chair about. An agenda item, but I think the town manager, at least in this accordance, I think it, it would be ideal to go through the manager and that's where. That second paragraph clarifies that when you're asking a question through the town manager, it's requesting that the chair and vice chair be on copy for that communication. Just so that we're aware, aware of it and. Can potentially assist. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, and I agree with. Others, Lou, we're really agreeing with you tonight, so good night. I appreciate everyone here, honestly, um. I do think that we should include. Anytime we have questions, so the public can see it and not just email it to Lisa, but continue. Those questions in a conversation in a meeting. So I do think that's really important and I wouldn't wanna do anything, um, different than that. Do agree. I think it was Counselor Nuccio saying, and maybe Lou saying. Copying everybody on emails, is that what was being said earlier, cuz that can get us in a lot of hot water, so. Don't like that idea either.
Yeah, no, I think the intent is always if there's not a copy, it should only be two, to, to, if, if it's a three, if it's three council members on. A correspondence. Then that's fine, but we're trying to avoid it being over three, cuz then it constitutes potentially an illegal meeting.
I thought someone said seven, oh, seven, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's okay, no, I think it was after the fact that if, uh, I think from the original language that. From any responses that were provided would then be sent, I think, from the town manager to. The original intent was that we sent to the entire council as a communication from the manager. And at that point, you know, there would be no intent for people to reply all or start a conversation about something.
And I guess one other thing, I think. Kimmy might have touched on it, the Board of Ed, they do, they have a dashboard where they put all information and they refer to it a lot in meetings. And then when I served on the Board of Ed, it would come in handy, it's just, if you have any question, three months later or something, you could go back and. Refer to it, I'm sure that's a massive project for the town to do something like that, so, I mean, maybe. In the future, something like that, so it's just not hold in place where, um, we could refer back to if there was any questions or we want to review something, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Gudicke. Lisa, did you wanna respond with anything before we, uh, continue?
Yeah, um, so we're just about done with this item. Just to comment, I, I like what Lou said about the, um, maybe including. The Q and A in the packet, I think, I think that is good, but I, I might have misunderstood something, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. I can still share it, the Q and A with all the council members as long as no one responds to me. But we'd also put it in the packet, is that. Appropriate or do you? Those who have time to read it, can read it.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, unless any counselors, if they wanna raise their hands, if there's any disagreement there, I think the intent was. That it would be shared with council members as well as the public by posting it in the packet. Councilman Nuccio, your hand is raised.
But I just wanna make sure we're not mandated to do this, right, cuz again, like I said, I haven't even gotten all my questions together, so if I, we're still asking questions in meetings. Like it's not, if you don't send in questions, then it's not.
Yeah, no, this is, this is more for, um. You know, so that's another point I think we're trying to improve upon is ideally the packet really should be published by Wednesday. Because mostly all the minutes are, you know, I think Lisa and I try and touch base usually on Monday or Tuesday about any agenda items to finalize the packet and then. We send it out to, to John and I to review and if we're all good, at that point it's published. So I think ideally, Lisa, and you can clarify, we try to publish the, the meeting packet by.
We're usually working on it on Thursdays.
Yeah.
Morning, I mean, there is so much.
There is a lot.
Pile and pick together when you're putting these packets together and copying and scanning, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into putting these packets. Together and. I know the staff was getting a little nervous, like, oh my god, we have to get these done even earlier now? Cuz before it was going out much later years ago, however, um. You know, we do try to get them out early on a Thursday, if we can get it out on a Wednesday, we will. The, the only other thing that, um, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with, and I don't know if all of you are or not. But the, um, the idea of revising the packet once it's gone out. I think that can sometimes get a little confusing, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it, it does create extra effort. And, you know, staff have to stop what they're doing and redo the packet because it's not just. Sending out one piece, you have to rescan the whole thing, upload it to the internet, there's, there's a lot involved with it. And I'm concerned that, um, you know. Redoing the Q and A. That, that's a tough one, if, if, if it's, obviously if it's going out to all council members, then definitely it should be shared with the public, I, I agree with that. But revising the packet at the last minute, maybe it could be included. As part of the minutes or something, if, if it's already after the packet's been prepared, it's up to all of you. But I just know last time I revised a packet, it didn't go over too well, and I don't blame you, Brian.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think the intent would be that, that revising the packet at the last minute is, is the exception rather than the rule, I think we, we try to. We try to have what's provided or questions answered, you know, within a reasonable time. Um, can be incorporated after the fact, but I think it's under the ideals, I think that second sentence, a reasonable effort will be made to provide. Question, answers to questions ahead of the meeting, if it can't be done within a reasonable time to add it to the packet, then it can be added afterwards to the, to the minutes or to. A different document, so, and that could be shared with the. The secretary.
Okay.
So I think we're all good, um, I think regarding that last sentence, Lisa, I don't know if we want to. Keep that in or not, I think because it's not really. Unless we, unless we indicate that it's in regards to agenda items, perhaps that last line doesn't need to be there, I think. If there's any objection to just removing it. Not seeing any from counselors, so. Councilman Gudicke.
I meant to say it earlier, but my dog keeps coming in and out of the room, um. Maybe I was just gonna go back a little bit to, um, emailing the whole council, just at the top, just put. In bold letters, do not reply, just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I try to say it pretty habitually that blind carbon copy is your friend, like if you're gonna email a group of people, like if it's the Conservation Commission. And or council or, or whatever group that you're emailing, if you put them in BCC, they can't even reply all and, and touch anybody. The only reply they can do is directly to you, so that's always my, my rule of thumb. All right, so I think we're pretty much all set, I did wanna go back to, I think the only item of, of potential concern for a second round of questions was the public hearing. Process. So for item four, I think the thought was written testimony submitted for a public hearing may be included. Would be the first sentence. And then. I'm just looking through again, I think we were trying to have this be in alignment with how correspondence the council is, is that we would just state that we received. X number or that we received. Communications from either a resident or an organization or several, you know, or business. In regards to the public hearing item, just so that we acknowledge that, say, you know, let's say there was a public hearing on the COVID relief fund. And we had ten residents in, in correspondence, you know, we would just state that, you know, written testimony. Would be included in that we would state, you know, the person that's responsible for reporting correspondence would state, you know, in regards to this public. state, you know, the person that's responsible for reporting correspondence would state, you know, in regards to this public hearing, we received 10 court, 10 emails from residents about this topic. I think that would, unless there's any objection to that from councillors. Oh, councilman Murray?
Uh, I think, um, public hearing communication is, uh, different than communication that might be sent in more generally. And I know there's been some, there were some suggestions when we talked about this earlier, that either the, uh, emails that come in regarding a public hearing get read in their entirety into the record or are included in their entirety in the record, um, like in the minutes. I would be more comfortable with one of those two options.
Okay, so in that case, then if they were included in the, in the packet or included in the the packet, are there any councillors that would be opposed to that being option? Rather than the, the concerns that were raised about summarizing? Councillor Luba, and then I think, unless I was hearing, I think councillor Nuccio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I think that that's something that, um, that would be appropriate. I think it's something that, uh, and, but I think that it would also deserve to be mentioned uh, during the public hearing to say that we receive these, um, the, uh, these, uh, these letters, and if we're going to read them in completely, then read them in, but also mention that they're going to be, uh, added into the packet. Um, or just simply mention and say that they're added in the packet. I, I, I'm good with either of them. But I think it's something that we need to at least mention it, and then if we are going to include it, include it in the packet, um, then I don't think that we need to read them in completely, other than saying that we've received these and they are included inside the packet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lewis. So just to clarify your statement then, item four would be, um, written testimony submitted for a public, public hearing shall be included in the meeting packet, and then the councillor responsible for reporting correspondence will also be responsible for reporting that public hearing testimony was received.
Yes, uh, that would be after, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Alright, thank you councillor Luba. Councillor Nuccio followed by councillor Khan.
Um, yeah, I think we should pick. I think, um, if we, cause, uh, listen, I'm a wordy girl. Everybody who gets emails from me knows that I'm a wordy girl. I can write some long emails. And I'm thinking if somebody had to actually read one of my emails into record, that could possibly potentially be a nightmare and a filibuster, a heck of a one. But, um, I think maybe we do a, uh, I, I like the idea of saying we received 15 emails and, um, you can, you know, the public can find them in the record if they want to review them, kind of a thing, because then the people who speak have their opportunity to speak their two minutes. The people who write in have the opportunity to have their written record in there. And that way we're not summarizing, we're not putting our own bias on it, we're not doing anything like that. We're just saying we got 15 emails. They're in the record. Um, and we don't have to word, read people's emails like mine.
Yeah. Thank you councillor Nuccio. Alright, councillor Khan? Oh, you're still muted. There you go. No worries.
I'm trying to, I'm still trying to understand the system, but it's like, uh, I think we all volunteered for this job, whatever we are doing, and working for the town and working for the people. If there's a question, questions from the, from the people or from the residents, how is there we are responding to them? That's number one, question number one. And about the system, whatever you guys are talking about it, like as Tommy says, if it's not, if it's not broken, don't fix it or don't change it. So I'm just still learning it, uh, but some of those things are not very much clear to me.
No worries, councillor Khan. I think I might be able to respond. So for the first question, for at least email correspondence, usually it's kind of up to the discretion of each councillor, if they want to respond to a residence inquiry. The town manager is on copy for those communications. So usually if they, if they feel inclined to respond, if it's an issue with public works or another department, they can respond on behalf. Um, but additionally, in our meeting agenda itself, communications and petitions from council persons can also fall under an area where if there's public participation or someone sends in an email, they may raise that communication at that, at point in the meeting and respond, and respond at that point. So there, there are a couple of areas, both privately and publicly, that could be used, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But yeah, then for the second one, I think some of it's trying to improve and, and expand, um, participation in public hearings, like the call correspondence that was mentioned before. I think we've also seen a lot more people email rather than attend in person for, uh, public hearings. And I think the intent of this language is to create more, you know, equality between those who submit those test, that testimony that, you know, they, that they're recognized as much as people who do attend are recognized, but, so if that clarifies that as well.
One more question is like, uh, there were a few emails about, uh, mass, en masse, and then, uh, a couple of other ones, but is the, is it Lisa? Is, is that Lisa responsible to respond those or?
I would say in general, if there, if, if they're requesting a response, um, you know, it's up to the discretion of each council member, if they're comfortable responding or how they'd like to respond to it. But if there's anything that's directed to the council in regards to the manager, I think the manager also has the discretion to respond as needed to a resident, so. That, that's at least my, my perspective on it is is if someone asks a question, everyone has the availability to respond. The key would be, if you do reply, you should reply directly, because again, if you start replying all, it could create, uh, an illegal meeting if we're all talking to each other about the same topic. So that's my one, one guidance for that is if a resident sends in a question and it's sent to the town council email, um, it should be responded to by each councillor directly to that person.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, no problem councillor Khan. Councillor, Vice Chair Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, uh, number four correctly. Uh, earlier in the meeting, I said, any email that came in regarding a public hearing that's on the current agenda should be read into the record. I, after this discussion, I rescind that statement because I have seen some of Ms. Nuccio's emails and we could be here for hours if we're reading things directly into the record. So I do uh, agree with, uh, the summarization of we got a certain amount of emails about this topic. But I thought I heard, uh, somebody say that these emails will be included in the packet that goes out. Is that right?
That, that was, I think, oh, sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
A lot of times you're getting your emails late. If there's a public hearing being held, sometimes you're getting four thirty, five o'clock that same day. Um, where people are voicing their opinions. So there's, you know, we can't include every item in the packet. Certainly it could be turned over to the, um, the clerk of the council to include for the minutes in the end, but, um, you know, we won't be able to include everything in the packet unless we had it ahead of time. That, that's my only concern.
Right. That's what I, that's what I thought I heard, but I, I don't see the sense in including the actual emails, uh, to be part of the packet. So uh, I support, uh, you know, that language that we just talked about, but not having the emails directly in the packet, because as you say, we get a lot of them, uh, they can be lengthy sometimes, and we do get them all the way up to the point where the meeting's about to start. So I don't see how that can be feasible. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Regan. Councillor Luba?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that clarification on that is, uh, when I, when I was saying packet before, I meant to include it as part of the minutes. Um, you know, that way, that way it could be referenced and that people would be able to see them. But as far as packet, I didn't mean the original, like, agenda packet. But if, uh, but included as part of the minutes packet, since we would be able to refer to it that way. That, that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
I think I would be agreeable to that unless there's any councillors that have concerns, um, that it would just be added to the minutes, but we recognize we received those correspondence. Alright, I'm not seeing any objections to that, so. I think Lisa, we might be good with everything else that's in here as, as amended. If you want to go through a quick summary, um, oh, did you freeze? Nope, you're there. Okay.
No, I'm here.
Okay.
I think I got just about everything. You, uh, th- this public hearing one, I think that's the only one I want to make sure I have it right.
Yep.
For number four, written testimony submitted for public hearing shall be included in the meeting packet minutes.
Yes. And then the second sentence.
Include the, uh, electors' name and address.
I think it should be in a, I think, uh, sorry, say it again.
Probably written testimony submitted for a public hearing shall be included within the meeting packet minutes. It should include the electors' name and address as well. The councillor responsible for reporting correspondence will be responsible for reporting the information.
Just, yeah, I think reporting the, the number of public hearing testimony items received. I think that was, that was the intent, is that we would just be, how many, how many emails were received on the, on the topic, because then at that point.
Can we also have that person provide the documents to the clerk at the meeting? Since they'll be, um, discussing the summary of it all?
Um, I guess I wouldn't see why not. But I think if it's, if it's sent via email, we would just have to.
Mr. Chair, can we, how would they have them? Like, uh, unless they're gonna print all of them out?
Yeah.
You know?
That was, yeah, that was the question I was gonna ask, because I think it would have to be emailed to the, to the secretary, or, you know, whoever's doing the, the secretarial duties, I think that would have to be emailed to them. Since they're already in electronic format. Cause yeah, I, I don't think we'd want to put a printing budget on an individual council member. I think it's.
No, 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 okay. No, I did that. Alright, we'll print it out for the minutes. Let me play with the language and I'll just send it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we all understand what you want here.
Yeah.
So I'll go around with it and I'm sure that we can get something that's gonna work. I'm removing number four under reports of boards and commission, uh, committees to the council, as Spohpo. I'm, I'm seven B. It should say councillor should identify the board or commission that they represent. Period. Councillor should briefly summarize any, briefly summarize the meeting from that board or commission, and then we're striking three. Number 12. Council, so designate a councillor for the term to present communications at each regular council meeting. The communication should be highly summarized as follows. Identify that a communication was received. Identify the, and identify the topic, uh, women. Identify that a communication was received, such as an email or mail from a resident business, and identify the topic. Briefly summarize the topic of the communication. Well, that's identifying the topic.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think that was, that B, that was only was that, uh, it was updated to identify the topic of communication, of the communication.
Yeah.
And that was it, and not say whether.
Identify.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
The topic of the communication and that's it for, yeah.
Uh, next one is the last statement, the last sentence, we're, we're striking. I'm on the right one here. The others were okay. There was no issue with what was mentioned in the other columns. Uh, column H, we're gonna leave that one sentence, town council members communication with staff shall be in compliance of Charter C49. And then we're gonna get rid of that last one. The last statement, and then questions from council members regarding agenda items sent via email to the town manager should also be copied to the chairperson and vice chairperson. A reasonable effort will be made to provide answers to the questions ahead of the meeting. Responses will be shared with all council members as well as the public through publishing responses in the meeting packet. And if it's not available for the meeting packet, it will be added to the minutes. Did I get that right?
That sounds correct. Are there any councillors that have an issue with that at this point? Oh.
And not reply to all I have here, too.
Just a quick question, um, can we see a finalized document? So we can, like, before we, like, I don't know if we should vote on this tonight, because there are a lot of changes and I'm not following all of them myself, so I don't know if it makes sense to get a final document and then vote on that? Just my question?
I, I think we would be okay to to move forward with the vote and then Lisa, that, you know, we're, we're approving the amended language, but Lisa can provide a email, kind of similar to what we were talking about with the, um, negotiating and, and finalizing the document for the miracle field study, that we'd all get kind of a final look through of it before it's, you know, it's officially published.
Make sure I picked it up correctly from what you all discussed.
Yeah.
So, cue.
I think, I think we should be fine to move forward and then just, you, you can send out a final document to just clarify the languages in place. And then councillor Nuccio, do you have any other input for that? Okay. And then I think Lisa, for that, then, with that being said, is there any other discussion before we go to the resolution? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the draft resolution as outlined in eight point one.
This is Katie Murray, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, John Regan.
Alright, so moved by councillor Murray, seconded by Vice Chair Regan. Is there any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call vote here. Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Councillor Murray?
Aye.
Councillor Luba?
Aye.
Councillor Utecheck?
Aye.
Councillor Nuccio?
Aye.
Councillor, uh, councillor Khan, sorry.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. I, I do appreciate, that was a very lengthy discussion, but I think, uh, a lot of compromise and consensus was built there, so thank you to everybody. Uh, moving on to item eight point two is a discussion of use of current budget funds for the conservation commission's timber study project requests. So I'll hand it over to Lisa, but I do want to recognize, I believe David Corcoran's in attendance, as well as Eugene Koss and I believe Jim Hutton, who are leadership from the conservation commission.
Okay, um, yes, they, I, I know they were in attendance and they probably still are. With having the shortened screen, it's hard to see who's here and who isn't. But, um, just, just to, uh, talk about this topic a little bit, there's been a couple of different requests, um, from the conservation commission regarding a, um, proposed plan that they have to select, do some select timber harvesting in the, in the various conservation areas of town. Um, what they're trying to do is to promote the health and the habitat of the woodlands in those conservation areas. Um, a majority of the trees in these areas are between eighty and a hundred years old. Um, all sort of planted at the same time, and I'm sure someone will correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure this is how it was. And what happens is it was. And what happens is the trees at some point will all die off at the same time. And what their goal to do is to try to create a natural forest so that some trees will be dying off at one point in time and others will be dying off at another point in time. So the goal is to harvest some of the timber, plant some new trees, so you have alternating ages, and it will create a natural, uh, forest. We have, we do have an awful lot of trees, um, which most of the state has significant damage from the, uh, gypsy moths and you, the ash trees, uh, the ash borer and the gypsy moths had destroyed an awful lot of trees. So what they'd like to do is harvest a lot of that, uh, clean it up and diversify it all in the age. Um, another part of this is that they would hire a qualified forester who could also do some of the, um, uh, salvage of some of the timber and may be able to recoup some of the funds back to the town from the sale of some of the wood that would be good, that, that what they would be harvesting. Um, the, in the general fund budget, there was a request for almost twenty thousand dollars for, um, for part of this. The, the overall request is almost forty one thousand dollars. That the commission also sent a request into the ARPA subcommittee for the whole forty one thousand, I'm just rounding up, forty one thousand. And there was also a request in the general fund budget to put at least the first part of the project, which was close to twenty thousand dollars, to at least get started. It would do the study as well as maybe handling the Campbell parcel for, for some of this work. There'd still be another, uh, twenty thousand dollars worth of work, but the goal was to one way or the other. Now regarding the ARPA subcommittee, I'm not sure where this is gonna fall of being an eligible expense under, under those funds. That needs a little more research. However, the part that was in the general fund budget, I decided to eliminate that on next year's request. But thought what I could do is maybe we have some savings in that department, in the planning department right now due to some staff attrition. And, you know, people coming in, people going out, people coming in at lower salaries, things like that. And I have just about the twenty thousand dollar savings in that department. What I like to do and is to use those funds to do the first part of this study. And, and at least get it started to get the study done and, and go forth from there. And, you know, we see what happens with the rest of it. If ARPA could fund it, you know, that, that could be a possibility. If it's within the same fiscal year, we could always reclassify if, if the council so desired to say, you know what, we want ARPA to take this whole amount and handle it if, if, if it certainly does qualify under ARPA, but if not, at least we get the twenty thousand started now. It's not in next year's budget and, and let them just start moving on if, if they'd like. Normally, with attrition and savings, if it's within the same department, I can normally move funds under the charter allowances. Um, but because this was so significant and there's other pieces that are involved with it, such as the ARPA request, things like that, I thought I'd bring it to all of you to kind of get a feel for how you feel about it. I wanna be open and transparent with something this large. So what I have tonight is, you know, I, I wanted to discuss it and, and see if you're in agreement with it. We also have, um, Jim Hutton here, David Corcoran, that could probably tell you a little more detail about, um, what is being requested than my summary. Um, would you like to hear that, or are you comfortable with what was shared and just would like to ask questions?
I would say I'm comfortable with what's being shared, and then I'd open the floor to questions from council members. I'll just, you know, obviously, everyone knows I'm the liaison for conservation, so I'm a big proponent of, of this, uh, of what you're proposing going forward in terms of expediting the requests, or their, their process to begin this forestry management plan. So with that being said, I'll open the floor to any counselors. They wanna raise their hand with any questions or comments, uh, even if it's just a quick, you know, this is a good idea, go for it. Councilman Murray?
I think this is a good idea and we should go for it. Um, I, I did have, uh, a question in reading the supporting documentation, uh, there was a reference to, uh, this being kind of self-funded going forward. Um, as, uh, Ms. Hancock noted, there might be some timber sales involved in this process, which could then, uh, fund like the next, uh, cycle of forestry, uh, management, and I wonder, uh, what we could do to help support that self-funding cycle.
I'm, you, do you want me to respond, Steve?
Yeah, Lisa, if you're able to respond, I think the first question is quick indication on the, the funding mechanism, or, or if it's able to be a self-sustaining fund, if, if you can, if not, I obviously can defer to David or Jim, I think, on the call.
I, I just wanted, well, I'll probably have them pipe in as well, um, if I don't answer this clear enough. Regarding the self-sustaining portion of it, um, I think that's where we'd have to see what the, you know, the return from the harvesting would be. Those funds certainly could be set aside with your permission in a separate fund. And then that fund could be used to go with the next part if there is sufficient funds, or the council may say, you know what? You spent twenty thousand, you got twenty thousand back, credited back, and it, it's a wash and it's in this year's and no impact on the fund, uh, the general fund. You know, it, whatever your preference is that, you know, it could be done that way, or you could fund it upfront now and then return go into a separate fund to be used towards the second part of the project. It, it, it would all depend on how the council would wanna proceed with that. Did I answer you? Okay?
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess my follow-up question then is, what action would the council need to take if we wanted to put the, the proceeds in a separate fund or, uh, allow for the self-funding mechanism to continue?
We would have to have a resolution just to authorize the approval to set up that fund. And saying that you'd like those funds to go into a separate fund. Now, since this is only going to be a temporary thing, I wouldn't recommend putting an ordinance in place, but possibly an agreement as to, you know, what those funds are to be used for, and maybe it's just all part of the resolution. You know, if this were something that was gonna continue like the education one percent fund, that's something that's gonna continue on and on, put it through an ordinance and public hearing and everything else, but since this is just going to be, you know, a short period of time, that's how I'd recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. Councilman Nutio?
Lou has his hand up. I feel like I jumped the line here.
I think Councilmen Lou put their hand back down. I don't know if they didn't, if they had their question answered, or if they changed their mind and didn't have a question at this time, but, but you, you have the floor, and if, uh, Counselor Luba does have a question, they can go next.
Fight him for it. I can take him. Um, so Lisa, I have a quick question. Um, I'm looking at, I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit here, but I'm looking at the town manager's report and I'm trying to figure out, uh, your current, um, expectation for end of the year, uh, revenue or expense surplus. So we're looking to take twenty thousand dollars out of that to pay for this, um, this portion of that, correct? Is that figured into your town manager, um, the finance part?
I'm trying to remember. I think I showed it as part of the there with me. I'm trying to go through my report here real quick, okay? Okay, the, the savings are being reflected in the planning budget right now. It's not showing it being used. You see, we have about, um, twenty five thousand dollars in there. And I'm referring to the, uh, the report that's in front of the town council. So the, what I'm proposing is using twenty thousand of that twenty five thousand that's being shown as savings.
Planning and community development, that one there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna use the dollars that are in there and instead use it for, um, the first half of this. Is the assumption that after we do the first half, um, as Katie mentioned, the, the timber that they're gonna be harvesting, that that would go towards the other twenty thousand, or is that sent to kind of go forward as a, in the future sustaining thing?
The, the goal would be to use it towards the rest of the project, whatever you get. That would be the optimal, um, use of those funds so that the rest of that forty, uh, twenty one thousand dollars, whatever we get in revenue would offset some of that cost. I don't know just how much we would get back in return for sure. And maybe Jim Hutton would be able to respond to that, if, if you'd like to know that.
Well, I'm not necessarily looking for it to refund the town. What I'm thinking is the, the harvest would help pay for the second half.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, it, it could be used for that.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much it would net.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, sorry, I don't know, uh, Tim, I see Jim raised their hand if, uh, you're okay with them responding.
Absolutely. Hi, Jim, how you doing?
I'm doing great. Um, nice to be with you, and I thought Lisa did a great job of, of summarizing what's going on with this plan. Thank you for considering it. Um, as far as what we'll get out of it, probably we should just talk briefly about the process. There's a first part of the project, which is about seventy three hundred dollars, which is to study these three parcels of land and do a detailed inventory of what trees are there. Because all the trees out there have some value. And the idea is to harvest some of them while in, to improve the ecology of the forest and long-term make it as wonderful as it's been for everyone up till this point. Uh, but keep it healthy and keep it going and keep the environment one that people Talon are going to enjoy for, uh, you know, generations to come. Um, so after that study is done, we will have a really good idea of the value of the wood that's on these properties. Every significant sized tree on these properties has a value. Once we have that inventory, we'll have a real good idea of what that value is. And then our professional forester would help us put together bidding documents that would allow log buyers, people that are out there that, uh, basically are logging companies. They off, would offer the town a certain amount of money to take that timber out of the forest and sell it on the open market. So we won't know the exact value, um, what we will get out of each of these properties until that detailed inventory is done. Um, so I can't give you a, a real good idea now. I can tell you that, um, one of the state service foresters, someone working for the state DEEP has spoken with us and said, um, he's pretty sure that we get, uh, quite a bit of income out of each of these parcels and probably enough to cover the cost of the, uh, forester services. So the first amount that, uh, Lisa has talked about, the twenty thousand dollars would be that initial detailed study of all three parcels plus the services of the forester to put together the bid package and see it through the cutting, because they have to observe that, make sure they're cutting the right trees and not damaging the land as they do that, um, for that first property to be cut. And hopefully, the income that comes in from that would then pay for the next property to be cut, and so on down the line.
I think that answers my question. Thank you very much, Jim.
Sure, happy to help.
Thank you, Councilman Nuti, Councilman Nutio. I don't see any other hands raised. So Lou, I, I know you lowered it before, but this is your chance.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. My answer, uh, my question's been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Uticek, your hand is raised.
I'm sorry. Um. I'm just wondering, so twenty thousand dollars, so how long does the first part of the study take? Do we know how long it would take or when it would start?
I think Jim might be able to answer that. I know they've been working very closely with, uh, Deep on that.
Yeah, the, the first part of the study, the actual inventory and, and the, getting the lay of the land and some details on what kind of trees we have there. If this was approved, uh, now or in the near future, we would probably do all that work, uh, during the spring and summer and hopefully be prepared for harvesting during the winter, which is the best time to do the cut, because it's less damaging to the land when the ground's frozen, so that would be the ideal way to proceed.
So I guess the follow-up question, so you would twenty thousand be enough to get the first part done, or I mean, or do you need forty thousand dollars to do the entire project by December?
No, that would, that would get the first part done. Basically, that would be the study of all three properties and then cutting on one of the three properties. And, uh, once we see what income comes in, uh, probably the following winter, we would hope to cut the other two properties.
I think it's a great idea. I just would wanna make sure we have a plan to help cover the balance of the project. I would hate to see we do half of it and then the other half doesn't get completed. So I like the ideas of savings from the trees. I think Katie might have mentioned, put it in an account, or I don't know how that would be managed. Um, if anybody else has any other suggestions, but, um, thank you, Jim, for answering the question.
And then I think, Jim, just one question that I have, though, just probably make it clear for council members. Even though this is kind of for the initial seed fund for, for this process, it is the intent of the Conservation Commission at some point to go through and probably inventory a majority, if not all of the trails. I think these, these three were highlighted as ones that were most heavily impacted by, uh, the gypsy moths and ash bores that were previously mentioned.
Uh, that's right, Steve, that, um, the hope is that this will be a continuing process, and in the end, we would have all of our conservation properties inventoried and studied, so we'd know what's there, and we'd be able to better determine, um, how to manage the forest on those lands going forward. And of course, we, we wanted to see what would happen on the first few to make sure it, it works well and that the, the process is not, um, well, is one that the town residents can accept as well as this council. So I, I did wanna mention one thing, which is there are some organizations out there, including state DEEP, that, um, have grant money for things like this. Um, if this is approved, we'll probably be pursuing those grants as well, so that may defray some of the costs also, but we can't be guaranteed on that. We, we just have to apply and, and see if our project falls in line and, and can get funded.
No, thank you for that clarification, Jim. I know we do have a, uh, recently hired project and grants manager now in the town, so that would be, uh, potentially an ideal, uh, project for them to, to work with the Conservation Commission on. Are there any other questions from counselors? I know the purpose of this was discussion. I think, uh, Lisa, you mostly wanted us to kind of give a our, our good graces or, or, uh, a general thumbs up, but no formal resolution or vote was required.
I mean, if you'd like to do a straw poll, that's up to you. I just wanna make sure that there's nobody really against me going ahead and, and moving forward with this. I do have the authority to do it. I just would wanna make sure because of the topic and the amount of money.
I think in this instance, a straw poll isn't necessary. I think in this instance, a straw poll isn't necessary. I'll just give an opportunity if any councilors do have a a strong concern or disagreement with it, if they want to raise their hand at this point. Otherwise, I think hearing everybody's commentary, I think we're good to move forward.
All right, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. And Jim, thank you for being here to support me tonight on this one.
Glad to do it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Jean. So with that being said, so we'll let that go forward. Thank you, Lisa. So eight point three is the resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for the twenty-twenty-two opioid response initiative?
Yes, this evening I have Bev Bellady and Maureen Flanagan here to discuss this grant. I'm going to let them take over the agenda item to discuss it. Bev, for Maureen, it's up to which one of you that would like to take it on?
I'm happy to address the council. Thank you, Lisa. We've probably all read about a recent heartbreaking and tragic death of a young person in our state, the cause of which was identified in the press as being a fentanyl overdose. We could be mistaken to think that their problems exist, quote unquote, over there and not here in Tallinn. According to data provided by the Connecticut Department of Health, Tallinn lost twenty-five residents between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one to unintentional drug overdose. Of those twenty-five, nineteen were found to have fentanyl in their systems. We have a responsibility to educate our citizens about the dangers and prevalence of opioid use disorder and to mitigate the risk where possible. I therefore respectfully ask the council to consider the resolution to authorize a submission of a grant application for the twenty-twenty-two Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative. We in the Human Services Department commit to working with the local prevention council, the school system, and other stakeholders to implement a meaningful strategy of awareness and prevention within our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. That was a great high-level summary. Thank you for that. Are there any questions from council members? Councilman Utecheck. Followed by Counselor Luba.
One's easy. It's, I think we should go ahead with it. I know there is a crisis and it's really sad to hear how many lives lost around the world and especially in our own hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Utecheck. Counselor Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would wholeheartedly support anything that can be done as far as studies or any type of intervention that we have on a town level for fentanyl and any of the opioid issues. Having just recently completed my fifth prosecution of drug dealers related to overdose deaths within my jurisdiction, that this is something that's just a burgeoning problem that, and I've talked to far too many families who's, and explained to them about how their family member has died because of a drug overdose. And I think it's something that we really need to to address. And I would wholeheartedly endorse anything that we can do on a town level to make sure that we take care of our residents, take care of our families here and address this issue so that we're not faced either ourselves or having any of the members of the Public Safety Department address family members and having to explain to them if a member has died because of an overdose. So thank you for bringing this forward. And I'd like to see us act on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Councilman Nuccio, followed by Counselor Khan and then Counselor Regan.
They were all ahead of me. If you want to give me the go-ahead again, that's fine, but.
You're at least at the top of my screen, and yeah, you keep raising and lowering your hand. I figured that's what you were trying to do. So if you want to yield and allow Counselor Khan and Vice Chair Regan to go first, that's fine.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Khan.
I I totally support it, support it. The one couple of questions for Maureen, that any idea how much how much drug, how much, whatever it is in our system? High school system or out there, whatever it is?
Counselor Khan, I can tell you that, you know, fortunately, there was a there was a survey done by the superintendent in cooperation with UConn of the, I think it was six through twelve or possibly eight through twelve graders last spring. And I'm happy to say that the, can you still hear me? Because my AirPods just died.
Nope, you're good.
Okay. I'm happy to say that in our town right now, the youth of our town anyway, any exposure to opioids, heroin, these kinds of things is is very minimal. Obviously, any exposure at all is concerning, but right now in Tallinn, our kids are, you know, they're accessing marijuana, they're accessing tobacco, alcohol, perhaps some prescription pills, which I realize can be opioids as well. But I was pretty interested to see that of the twenty-five deaths that I referenced, the average age of death in Tallinn was thirty-eight. Most of them were male and most of them were white. So I personally, with this grant and moving forward with other grants as well, I'd like to kind of take a dual approach with kind of educating our young people about the dangers of opioid use, but also finding some way to reach out to some of our older residents who are actively using. And I'm actually going to be taking a Narcan training tomorrow. I hope to kind of do some training on that so that family members who know they have people in their in their family who are, you know, at risk of overdose, you know, they can leave that training with Narcan in their hand with the knowledge of how to use it in an emergency. So I think that we have to take a two-pronged approach to this problem in Tallinn.
Thank you, Maureen. I've heard a few things about you that you are doing a fine job and keep doing it and keep us, keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. Vice Chair Regan.
And Mr. Chair, so this is my wheelhouse. I talk to addiction specialists, treatment providers every day in my line of work. So anything we can do as a town, we need to do it as quickly as we possibly can because it is here. We've recently legalized marijuana. I spoke out publicly against that, but I lost that fight. We're also finding fentanyl in marijuana now. So the problem is here and it's severe. So anything we can do to help that. And I'd also like to loop in the recommendation that we were given by the by the task force and see if we can coordinate with the task force just beyond getting this grant. Tonight, we're just talking about applying for the grants. I understand that. But I definitely support that. And there's a lot to do and a lot that we need to do and we can do as a council. So I say move as quickly as we can and apply for this grant, and then let's talk about what else we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Regan. Counselor Nuccio.
Thank you very much. I echo what John just said. I'm anxious to look at the recommendation from the Mental Health Task Force in the ARPA Committee. Maureen, my question was for you. And again, I want to say I think you're doing a great job. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I know the five thousand dollar grant's not a lot of money, especially when we're dealing with something as big as opioids and substance use disorders. And I was just wondering if you could kind of give us an idea, and I think you started to kind of tap on that, what you're planning to do with that five thousand dollars, because again, it's not a lot, but I'm just interested in what you think in the time that you've been here now, how you can help get information out to the public, maybe?
Thank you. There are some specific deliverables that are required as part of this grant, so those are specifically using local and state data to guide priority populations and strategies. I do have experience of that in my previous career using data to make, you know, data-driven decisions. So I'm comfortable with that expectation to implement substance.
Yep, thank you. They officially died. Implement substance abuse prevention and behavioral health promotion initiatives within the communities, and then they have some specific models that they want us to implement about raising awareness. So I'm going to have to going to have to work with the school system on some of those models because a lot of them are related to youth awareness. Like I said, I think on the adult side, there is some outreach that we can do. You know, we're really, I'm actually I've come to learn about, you know, how much interface we have with the public through the fuel assistance applications. So we we see a lot of the families that come in and sort of the, some of the families that are struggling that maybe are a little bit under the radar. And I think those are the very families that, you know, we can, we do have access to, to, you know, we kind of know who they are, in other words. So, you know, that's where I would be kind of encouraging those families to attend those workshops more oriented toward adults, adult use and adult safe, safe use. You know, it feels like an oxymoron to say that, but you know, that is a fact. So I kind of want to focus on reaching out to some of the adults in our community. I kind of, one of the, one of the options for this grant is to, what they call them wellness bags. So it's sort of like, you know, a kind of like a goodie bag with some, you know, relaxation tapes and face masks and, you know, those sorts of things for adults. And I would kind of like to reach out to Hocken Valley and CHR and child guidance and find out not who in Tallinn they're serving, but sort of like get an idea from them. How many of our residents are you serving? Putting together some of those wellness bags with some information about how they can contact us, how they could reach out to us to let them know as a town, we're here for you and we're aware without identifying specific patients. So that's kind of some of my ideas. That's a great idea. Thank you for writing that down. I like that idea a lot, but thank you very much. That's helpful. Obviously, I'm a hundred percent in support of us going after this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nuccio. And I do want to echo that as well. You did a phenomenal job, a phenomenal job representing this, and I think the council is wholeheartedly in support of you acting on this. And perhaps in the future, we can have you back to see how the program was and where you found some successes in coordinating with those various organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that being said, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the draft resolution as outlined in eight point three.
I'd make that motion for agenda item eight point three.
I'll save it. I mean, I'll second it.
Beat me, Tammy.
By, I think it was Counselor Luba and seconded by Counselor Nuccio. There's a lot of feedback there, but I think it was Counselor Luba came up first and then Counselor Nuccio was second.
Everybody's in support. We were all rushing for it.
I know, right? All right. Seeing over the discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Murray.
Aye.
Counselor Luba.
Aye.
Councilman Utecheck.
Aye.
Counselor Nuccio.
Aye.
Counselor Khan.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Go forth, do good work, Maureen and Bev and everybody in Human Services. So that gets us on to eight point four, an update on the ARPA water study. So turn this over to Lisa. I know that you've been working with Connecticut Water Company, so I know Gali Bevez as well, so that you guys can provide an update for the council.
We don't, I know Beverly is here as well, and if she'd like to speak, I'll give her that opportunity also. There's not a lot going on right now, except that they're going through the process of doing the study. Connecticut Water is, I've signed the contract with them and they're working on the the study. I'm hoping that he will have something in a week or two as that is what Craig Petla from Connecticut Water advised me. Once we get through that process, there's another process that we have to go through with the actual application for the grant, if the council decides that's how you want to proceed with this whole thing. Certainly, the water, anything to do with water lines, applying for loans through the the Clean Water Fund, Clean Drinking Water Fund, must go through the Water Commission. And Beverly is much more well-versed with the Water Commission regulations and so forth. So there's a there is going to have to be some sort of discussion with the Water Commission to move forward with applying for this grant. Once that's the case, also I think it's going to, you know, we're going to have to see, you know, a thorough design, study, everything to see just what the cost would be. And if that's something that the town council is going to want to support, because the way the regulations are written under the Water Commission is that depending on the cost of the project and how much is funded with grants or loans, if there's any sort of debt involved, of course, town council must approve them to enter into that debt, but also the regulations require that the recoupment for the payment of that debt, unless otherwise specified, would have to be put onto the burden of the homeowner as a special assessment and would have to pay it back over time. I know there's some concern out there with some of the residents. There may or may not be concern with all of them, but so there's a lot of things to really think about once once we get the results of this study and certainly should be discussed as to how you'd like to move forward with this, as well as getting the Water Commission behind it, because if the the Water Commission does not want to move forward with a loan application, we may have a problem there. So, and this all has to happen within a relatively quick amount of time because of the application period and when it closes. So I just want to give you a heads up on that. And Beverly, do you have any, are you still here, Bev? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Can you hear me? Yes. I think you framed it perfectly, and I think once the report comes back from Connecticut Water, we'll know what direction. And we can probably start working quickly to, depending on what the guidance from the council is, to kind of start teaming this and getting the data together for the application. So, you know, hopefully, I believe Connecticut Water said within a week or two, we might have some information.
That's what they told me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from council members? This is just a discussion item. I think it was pretty well-written summary, but all right, I don't see any, Lisa, so we will just, we will move on, but we'll keep an eye out for the next couple of weeks for that report.
I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. All right, eight point five appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Just want to thank Valerie for their many years of service to the Conservation Commission. I know that they haven't left Tallinn altogether, but I know they're still, I think, in touch with members of that commission, but want to thank them for their service. But with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment to the Tallinn Nonprofit Housing Corporation as outlined in eight point five.
Chair, this is Lou Luba. I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
This is Katie Murray. I'll second.
The motion made by Counselor Luba, seconded by Counselor Murray. We'll do a, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Murray.
Aye.
Counselor Luba.
Aye.
Counselor Nuccio.
Aye.
Counselor Nuccio.
Aye.
Counselor Khan.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. So welcome, Mr. Hodge. Thank you for serving on the Tallinn Nonprofit Housing Corporation. Nine old business, we do not have any. So item ten, reporter of the interim town manager. Lisa, take it away.
Okay. Just a few things. Today I was with the Council of Small Towns. We had our annual meeting. Uh, today I, I was with the, uh, Council of Small Towns. We had our annual meeting. And, uh, much of us town managers were there, talking about all kinds of good things. Um, in attendance today was, um, the governor, the lieutenant governor were there. Attorney General Tong, I think is how you pronounce it. He was there as well, speaking about the whole opioid lawsuit and things like that. The governor was talking about, um, working towards reducing taxes and many of things. And one of the, uh, discussion items also had to do with the, the governor going to possibly be, um, removing the restriction for mask mandates within the, uh, public school systems. And he will be turning over that authority to the, the school system to make those decisions if they want to continue mask mandates. But he is going to lift the mandate, um, possibly, uh, February twenty eighth. It, I don't know if it'll be sooner, but that, that's the direction he's headed with that. And, um, my thoughts in regards to that is to probably go along with, um, with him at the February twenty eighth deadline. If he removes it for the school systems, I'll probably lift it for the town public buildings. Although would still strongly be encouraging those who, um, wanna wear a mask, probably should or could. Um, we'll still provide them at the entrances, but we won't restrict it at that point. But I just wanna see what the governor does first. So I'm somewhat consistent within our public buildings. Um, another thing, I know there's been a lot of questions about the, the, uh, removing of the state of emergency. And I did a, actually I had Mike Wilkinson do a poll of several surrounding communities, as well as, um, some other communities our size. And not one of them have list, lifted their state of emergency yet. And, um, sort of kind of along the lines of what I've been thinking is to wait to see what the governor does. When he lifts the state of emergency for Connecticut, then probably will go along and lift the state of emergency for, uh, municipality. Um, so that, I just wanted to give you a little update on that. I know there's been a lot of, uh, concern uh, to wanna move forward with that. Right now, it's, it's just keeping things open in case we need it, but. So that's where that stands. Another thing, um, as Counselor Khan mentioned earlier, the, at the EDC meeting the other night, um, there was several discussions, um, one of them having to do with um, the noise ordinances and drive-throughs. And they're putting things on hold until they can maybe address the noise ordinance concerns. But they'd also like to be invited to the, uh, March thirty first meeting that the joint PZC and, and town council are having. And if there's no objection to that, I'd like to, uh, include them in, in that meeting, if that's okay with all of you.
I see no objection to it. And I don't think, uh, I can't speak for every council member, but I think they work fairly well with planning and zoning. And I think some of the members would have some valuable input to provide, as well as the, uh, PZC members. Uh, Councilman Nuccio, your hand is raised?
The meeting that we're having with the PZC, isn't it to go over the affordable housing thing, though? Is it more than that? I thought it was just that.
I think, I don't know if David is still here. Let me see. Uh, he may have signed off already. Um, that's okay. I think the majority of it has to do with, um, the affordable housing and, and the concerns that you had. And I think they're, they're make, they have some thoughts about what they'd like to do around that whole it was my capital program. It just fell on the floor. Um, maybe redesigning it or, or looking at that ordinance again, or the regulation that they created and maybe making some changes or eliminating it. But I think they'd like to have a discussion around that. But the EDC also would like to be included with some of the ideas as well, as far as, um, you know, maybe bringing some affordable housing in and so forth. Counselor Khan, do you have anything that you recall that you'd like to add regarding the EDC's involvement?
I think that, I think that was only issue that they are concerned about, uh, affordable housing. That's about it.
Thank you.
Were you all, uh, Councilman Nuccio, sorry, Lisa? I wasn't sure if she was all, if they were all set. Okay. So, Councilman Murray?
Uh, Lisa, have you had a chance to, um, bring this request to PZC?
You mean to invite the EDC to, um, no, not yet. I was having David work with them. So that's why I was, I didn't know if he was still on, because he was going to reach out. And I was going to reach out to the council and make sure everybody's on board and okay with it. So, um, I just have to wait to see.
Our, our joint meeting is scheduled for like March thirty first, if I'm recalling this correctly. Yeah. I, I don't have any objection, as long as planning and zoning is okay with it. I think this meeting is happening at their request. So I, I would feel more comfortable making sure they were okay with adding another group to that meeting.
Sure. The plan is to reach out to them. We'll, we'll get it, we'll try to get a response for that.
Thank you, Murray. Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, too. I think I'm fine with it. But yeah, I, I know that that's the intent is, uh, David will reach out to get confirmation from them. All right.
The, um, one last thing, um, today, there's the, uh, infrastructure grants. Um, they were talking about those and even the governor also said, you know, jump on it. He, you know, the first one there, they're trying to do geared towards more regional, um, initiatives. So that, that's one of the, um, challenges of how we could do something regionally with some of these infrastructure funds. I did speak with, um, the town manager from Coventry briefly after the meeting with some ideas that I had. But we'll see where that goes. Our new, um, project manager and, um, grants administrator manager, she was going to be on the meeting tonight, but she was having difficulties with the iPad connectivity. So unfortunately, she's not here this evening. But Leslie Campagnalo, I, I hope, I probably messed up the last name. I'm sorry. Um, joined us on, uh, yesterday. She was her first day and she's getting acclimated to the town. And Beverly has been working wonderfully with her, really, you know, trying to share some of her extensive knowledge. And there's certainly going to be a learning curve for some of our things, but I've been throwing different things at her. And, uh, I guess that's, that's about all I have, unless you have questions regarding the manager's report.
I did have one quick question, Lisa, and it's maybe one to, we probably have to reach out to an appropriate body. So regarding the infrastructure and the, and the regionalization, is that, is the assumption that it would possibly go through CROG?
Yes, they, they were talking about working with some of the COGS, um, and going for it. Right now, they don't have specific guidelines developed yet. They're, they're just speaking through. Um, I did get some contact names and email addresses. And actually, uh, Leslie will be reaching out to get more information as well, um, from them. But, um, so, you know, they're, we're, it's starting to move along, but nothing's definite as of yet. But they will be working with COGS.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilman Nuccio?
Thank you again. Um, Lisa, I mentioned this earlier in the meeting. But I'm wondering if you could do a quick, uh, rundown of the financial statements that you have in the, in the, um, town manager's packet. I'm just looking for, right now, we're four months away from the end of the year. And I just wanted to get an idea if I read it correctly and I think, um, where we're gonna end. Estimated, I know it's an estimate.
Mm-hmm. There with me a minute here.
Bear with me. I'm just, uh, trying to see the report and I didn't bring my glasses with me tonight.
Okay.
The, um, in the, in the overview, I did, uh, give a lot of information. I think, um, with our property taxes, we are going to have some significant excess revenue that we had not dish, uh, had originally planned on. That had to do mainly with, um, motor vehicle supplemental taxes. We had never anticipated so many people buying cars when we did our, our budget projection for those revenues. Um, so I'm showing an overall of, um, I'm trying to see the number here. I apologize. Of about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars extra in revenue. The, um, the, the big use would also have to be, um, with the investment income is down very low. That, I'm trying to, uh, talk to some of the higher end issues. We, the, the rates have just been atrocious. So we haven't been earning a lot of interest income. Some of the excess revenue from tax collections will certainly offset the loss in some of that revenue. We're also seeing a lot of property, um, transfers or refinancings, uh, different documentations and recordings that have, um, really, uh, jumped in the, uh, the town clerk's office, as well as a lot of people staying home rather than going on vacation or not using their money as they always have and doing a lot of home improvements. We're seeing a lot of building permits coming in, so to, to contribute to these excess revenues that we get in anticipation. Now, for next year's budget, I have boosted up a lot of these numbers based on the trend for the past couple of years, as well as where we think and hope things are going to continue to go, which will certainly help with some of, um, the impact on the mill rate next year. Um, regarding expenditures at this time, you know, we do have some attrition savings from, uh, staff attrition, retirements, things like that. Little bit of a shortfall in the refuse and recycling budget. Again, some of the savings will offset that shortfall for the, uh, the cost of, um, uh, refuse and recycling that has been extensive. The other estimate that I did include here, you will see, um, other finance, other financing uses, um, transfer out. That's for the education and I hope it's under the right line item. Yep. You'll see a total of seven hundred and ninety six thousand dollars being, uh, transferred out. So without the, uh, the budget estimate to in- increase the budget, it looks like our budget is gonna be overspent by seven hundred and seven thousand. That's truly not going to be the case. Um, what will happen is the, um, in April, we will come forward with the request for the Board of Ed one percent fund, which is included in the seven hundred and ninety six thousand dollars, as well as, um, the adjusted budget for, um, the COVID reserve fund that you approved at the last meeting. This is a snapshot as of, um, twelve thirty one, so that entry is not in here yet. But in the proposed, uh, projected through June thirtieth, I included those two items. So with that, you'll be increasing the use of fund balance, as well as increasing the transfer, um, to those funds for those things. So the, the actual impact would be you'd take your five hundred and seventy thousand here and, um, it would offset your, your expenditures and what you're transferring out. So we're, we're looking at about a possible hit to fund balance of about a hundred and thirty six thousand, rather than the three fifty that we had originally planned on right at this point. Now, this is just an estimate, highly subjective to the next few months. Um, things could change. The tax collections are based on, you know, just hoping and guessing on these numbers based on trending and, um, the, you know, additions and deletions that happen every month for corrections and adjustments. So at, at this point, that's, that's where we sit with these items. And I think I hit on everything. Um, at this point, the Board of Education is telling me that they'll probably spend most of their budget. I don't know if that'll change, but, um, they say that they are trending very close this year. They do have bus transportation where they didn't have as much last year. Um, special education costs have been running high from what I've been told. So they just have to see where a lot of that stuff comes in and what we get back from the state regarding the excess cost reimbursement for special education. Um, I think I hit on other things, unless you have a specific question regarding the dialogue that I included with the report?
Nope. So I wanna make sure I'm, I'm clear here. How much should we plan in the budget again to take out of the fund? So two fifty or three hundred?
Three fifty.
It's three fifty. Okay. Look, I was one number off on the wrong spot. Um, and the, uh, this, this, the display that you have here does not include putting in the seven hundred and ninety six thousand from the, um, Board of Ed excess for last year, correct? This just shows it coming out. It doesn't show it going into the general fund?
Oh, no. It's already in, it's in your fund balance. The seven hundred and ninety six thousand already is in your fund balance as of the end of June thirtieth. Now, what will happen is
But the fund balance isn't listed on here.
No, it's not.
No. So we're only seeing that half. We're seeing the seven ninety six come out.
Right. So that, but the impact, because of the other revenues that we have, the excess revenues that we're estimating.
Yep.
You hear me? Estimating, bold words. You know, if, if they do as well as what I'm projecting, um, then the hit may not be as bad, even with taking that out. That's what I
Well, yeah, I guess that's my, that's my thing.
Yeah.
If we, if we look at the both sides of it coming in, you know, it's a, it is a significant, um, that in the extra revenue is the unexpected revenue driving it.
Yeah.
Is a big, it's a big dollar amount. Looks like to me, if we have eighty nine thousand, we just took twenty out for conservation. We're still looking at about seventy thousand from an expense perspective that might be available. Um, that from attrition and that, which seventy thousand dollars on our total budget is a hundred percent reasonable. Um, I'm gonna petition that we look at the money that's in here. This is already money that's come from the taxpayers. I've said this, uh, eight million times since I've been on council. Money that we've already taken from the taxpayers. And I'm going to strongly advocate that we use that for capital items, one time, you know, one-time items and, um, take care of some of the debt, cause the capital plan debt, the debt plan is a little concerning to me. Um, so I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Five hundred and seventy thousand in extra revenue and about seventy thousand after the twenty thousand there and less expenses. Offsetting the three hundred and fifty thousand that we thought we were gonna have to take from the, the general fund that we will no longer have to take from the general fund.
Probably not.
Okay.
Um, and again, these numbers are just estimates.
Yep.
We, we may end up less than the, this, but right now, that's kind of where I'm, I'm trending things. Another thing I wanted to mention, um,
You're usually pretty spot on, though, Lisa.
Remember, I got two hats right now, so.
Yeah, I know, but you know, I, I, I've worked with you long enough. You're, you're usually pretty good with your projections.
I'm trying to watch it. But, um, the, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, is that we had planned, had, originally, we're told we're, we're gonna get some, uh, municipal revenue sharing money at the beginning of the year, when, when the budget was approved by the legislature. And I, most recently, after I did this, uh, I don't know if I got it in here as part of the update, was advised I don't know if I got it in here as part of the update, was advised from the state that we're not getting.
You're not getting it, it was a lie.
So luckily I had not budgeted that last year. So it's not going to impact the budget, but the money that we were hoping to maybe turn over to the municipal stabilization fund. May not be coming to fruition at this point.
Yeah.
So so that's happened, there was also a nice chunk of change that would have been in next year's budget. I was so looking forward to that and again, I've been advised, don't budget.
Yeah, no, I asked too, I I asked where it went. I don't understand how we pass something and everybody agrees on it during a budget and then they just say, yeah, no, we lied, so you know.
And and one of the other things they discussed today also has to do with the the governor's proposal. To maybe reduce taxes, reduce the sales taxes within the state as well as reducing the motor vehicle tax. And my big concern there is, you know, we're being told. That the the difference in the motor vehicle tax that we would be made whole and we were told that last time.
Yeah. And I wouldn't trust it, I wouldn't trust it.
And I'm very nervous about that.
No, they're talking about capping it at 29 and it's.
And if they do, that could be. I don't want to say devastating, but what's going to happen is you're going to have a shift in tax burden to the property owners of the town. The the cut the commercial, the real estate. The the tax burden, the mill rate will increase because we have to reduce the other memory. So the revenue coming in from one source is just going to have to be shifted. And that is going to be a challenge for us if we do not have an offsetting revenue source to make up that difference. So it doesn't have to be shifted. So I'm just giving you a heads up on that and certainly going to voice my concern to our legislative committees that I work with through GFOA, CCM. Our state representative, when I speak to them, when they're on that on that clock.
You won't be the only one.
You know, because that that is my big concern. And you know, hey, if they. That's great, but you know, are they going to continue that differential years down the road? No, they they more than likely will take it away after a few years if they make it out. That's my, that's my gut feeling, so. All right, I've spoken enough unless you have any other questions.
Nope, I think I'm good with the with the the summary that you put in there. I just wanted to make sure I had all the numbers right in my head. And to kind of just give a heads up that I'm going to be advocating that we look at one time expenses. With the any any monies that are left over from the end of the year. Also, and to keep in mind that we should look at. A a couple of other things in regard to this that I'd like to. I'd like to see if we can eventually talk about is, one, the study for the sidewalks on the town green and also. Money in regards to phase two of Wanted Park. If there's money left at the end, which it looks like there's going to be money at the end of the budget. So I'd like to kind of start a running list of things that we could look at. To possibly use for investment dollars. So thank you for including that and giving the breakdown.
Yep, the the one thing with the sidewalks, there's there's two things there. One is that I'm I'm working on the engineering budget and rather than trying to put that into a capital program. There's there's two trains of thought that I have. One would be possibly using some of our engineering budget. To do that process, if there's any money left over this year. I may be again coming to council to discuss that again, if there's any money left in the engineering budget to talk about. All right, do you want to look at this, is this a study you want to do? Are there other studies you want to do? The other thought is that, you know, there could be possibly some grants out there. The the infrastructure grant is supposed to be looking at mobility and transportation, including sidewalks, things like that. So there may be some opportunities through the grant process as well. If this is something that the town council is going to definitely entertain and want to move forward with. Once we get to that point, and I know you want to readdress it in the spring, that that's my understanding. Then we go from there and decide, you know, are we going to go through the engineering budget to do a preliminary study? Am I going to try to or and or reach out for a grant? And see if there's a grant that could pay for this study. And that and then we go from there, there may even be grants to do the sidewalk. So be it. But there's a lot of things to be answered and most recently. I think Beverly reached out to an engineering firm that does a lot of historic preservation and repair work. So that's something I also have to look at.
Perfect, thank you, Lisa. The engineering, the engineering budget is in which area, that's in planning, correct?
Public works, well, yeah, it's. It's controlled by Dave Corcoran, but the the way the account structure was set up, it's it's in front of public works because years ago, that's how it was structured. But planning, the planning director oversees the the engineering budget.
Because we're showing as an overage of 30, almost $35,000 in public works.
That's, it's a shortfall.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, that's over budget, we're over budget.
Right, that that's because of recast and recycling, so we're going to see. Where that ends up and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to cover it with some of the other things.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, and I did make note of your two requests. As notes for the communications and petitions and council persons, but if you do have more, we can also mention them there too.
Thank you, they were going to be part of my petitions, so thank you very much.
No problem. So if there are no further questions, we will move on to item 11, adoption of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as outlined in 11.1.
I'm making a motion.
So moved by Councilman Utechek, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Vice Chair Regan, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, Councilman Nuccio?
That was from before.
No worries, you're, no, I I was just, I was letting you go first to vote.
Yes, sorry, yes, I approve, I.
Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Utechek?
Aye.
Counselor Khan? And I'm an I, so that is unanimous, thank you, everyone. Correspondence to council?
Yeah. So we had five email communications that came in over the past two weeks. One was an email from KidSafe, which is an affiliate of the Village for Families and Children regarding potential services the organization could offer to all. Excuse me, there was an email regarding Miracle Field, an email forward of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection client. Sorry, Climate Solutions Newsletter, an email with feedback regarding the children's programming at the public library. And an email regarding the mask mandate for town buildings.
All right, thank you, Councilman Murray. Moving on to item 13, Chairperson's Report, I have four items I'm going to mention for that report. The first is the Chairperson's Hour last week ran pretty well. We had one resident who was on for the full hour, you know, talking about any everything from the town's IT infrastructure to the school's physical infrastructure. Commercial development and council goals, so it was overall really a robust discussion and they weren't even aware that it existed, that there was a cap chair hour. So it was a nice, a nice surprise because otherwise I think last last month it was just me and Andy and Mary Lee chatting for about half an hour. The second update is a reminder, obviously, that this Thursday is our capital budget hearing. And obviously encouraging residents to attend, review the presentation and proposal and offer questions or input. Item three is the Town Manager Search Update. So a final draft of the advertisement and brochure have been completed and shared with the full council. It'll be transmitted to SGR who will inform of when the position is officially posted. At which point, the 30 days following the post date, it'll be the first screening of applications. And I believe they noted that the posting will be shared across several national association sites as well as several state association sites and. Government job boards once it's posted. And finally, there's a reminder of our Joint Board of Education meeting and Town Council meeting on the 24th. While we do need to vote on the 22nd to return to the hybrid meeting format, after speaking with the the town manager, I believe. Town staff is planning for space to be available for a hybrid meeting, assuming we go forward to reverting to hybrid style meetings. And I'll just actually add as a fifth item, I do support Lisa's commentary about recent news regarding mask mandates. I do hope things were moved forward with the legislature and they can conduct a. A highly highly encouraged, you know, keeping it in alignment with how we are with businesses, that masks are strongly encouraged, but are not necessarily required in town buildings and town facilities. Starting on the 28th, so just want to thank Lisa for that update. With that being said, I would take public listed participation on any subject, actually, sorry, nope, I skipped one. Communications and petitions from council persons, so there any other petitions? I know, see, Councilor Luba's hand is raised, I think Councilman Nuccio may have had a couple more, but. And then Counselor Utechek?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, that uh, I just want to say that I wanted to thank the Board of Education again. For their outstanding discussion of their budget yesterday. I know that they're working hard on it, so I just want to stress that. Also, again, I wanted to thank members of the Connecticut National Guard, where I was fortunate enough to be able to to meet them at the airport when they came in. From their mission over in the Horn of Africa, so I wanted to walk them all, welcome them all home again. And then lastly, as promised, I am going to petition again that we address the issue of the mask mandates within town town buildings. And also ask that the issue regarding the Declaration of Emergency for the Town of Talon be addressed on one of our upcoming agendas. So that we can take a vote on that again, as far as whether or not it should be continued or ended. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Councilman Nuccio followed by Councilman Utechek and then Councilman Murray.
I think Colleen had her hand up first if she wants to go first.
That's fine, Councilman Utechek first, then then Tammy and then Katie.
All right, thank you, yes, thank you, Lisa, for the update on the masks and everything that went over tonight. I'm hopeful, like other council members, that mask mandates can be lifted and people can have choices if they want to wear them in buildings or. Wherever they want to wear them this time to step moving forward and I'm hopeful for that. And I was just wondering, I don't even know if it's too soon, if there's an update sometime on the safer grant process by the fire department. Just started that process and. I think Councilman Nuccio mentioned it at last meeting and I would like to revisit Crumlin Foundations. We haven't talked about it fully, at least on this council, we haven't. And we talked about a lot of other issues and I think that I don't want that to get lost. And just a couple more. Things, I was looking over our goals, I know we're going to talk about that in six months. But one of them was the Crumlin Foundations and another one I read was the promote fiscal policies that are designed to maintain the town's double A bond rating status. Not sure, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't know. But just but that too, but I I was wondering what that process is, is that a policy the town council would make and vote on or. Just a little bit more information, I think it's a good idea, I just don't know where we go and how we start that. And I think, just one last thing, last night we had, we did have technical difficulties with the mental health task force, no fault of anybody, but it did. Concern me that we couldn't move forward with having a meeting, so we can reschedule to next week, so I don't know if there's some sort of backup plan. I don't know if it was a link issue, if if that's what it was, if there's a backup link in case something like that happens in the future. And I think, Steve, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Utechek, so Councilman Nuccio followed by Councilman Murray.
Thank you, um, I only have two other things that from the other ones that we were talking about. One is I am making a formal request that we fully open the senior center. Along with everything else that's going on, we should have the senior center back to all of their regular programming and lunches and everything else. So I'm hoping we can see that open back up fully. And also, my second one is I am asking. What would be the difference in what we already approved for the Miracle Field? If while we're looking at all the fields for where the best place for the Miracle Field to reside in, can we look at? All of the fields that we have from an accessibility perspective, I'm not asking for anything massive or like detailed engineering plans, but. We have some fields in town that we might have an easier time with accessibility than others. So I'd like to get an overall plan of the fields in their accessibility from an ADA perspective, if possible.
All right, thank you, Councilman Nuccio, definitely written all of those down to to review. Councilman Murray?
Thank you. I'm, I guess firstly, I I would like to get some sort of idea when we get an update on the Miracle Field study. I appreciate what you said earlier, Steve, about the Town Manager Search. I think it would be great to get a timeline for that process that maybe could be shared with the public even on a sort of generic basis. What the general timeline is so that the public can know how that process is going and. Where we are in the process and what the timeline looks like. And also to request that we discuss at an upcoming meeting or 960. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Murray. Are there any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to item 15, which is publicly listed participation on any subjects within the town council. We're within jurisdiction of the town council of three minute limit, you can either raise your hand with the raise hand icon. Or you can hit star nine and as a reminder to state your name and address, Heather McKinnon.
Hi again. First, I wanted to applaud you on the use of the closed captioning for the Zoom. I'd love to see this at all the time, for all the town meetings, I think it's great. Second, regarding the BOE FAQ we discussed earlier. It is used for the development of the proposed budget, for the development of the proposed budget. And it is in fact made public once it is adopted. So it is not something that is being withheld, it will be made public once it's adopted. And then the focus will shift from BOE deliberations and approval to presentations to the town and the community. And third, I'm happy to see that Talon is taking actions to address the opioid pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 10:10 PM.
Well, I'll make that motion.
The move by Councilman Nuccio, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by. All right, seeing no discussion, we'll do a roll call, all those in favor, Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
Counselor Utechek?
Aye.
Councilman Nuccio?
Aye.
Counselor Khan? And I'm an I, so that is unanimous, thank you, everyone, have a great night.